Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for July 22, 2025. City Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Bargava.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sumit Doria.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bargava, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Of no allegiance, the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are 14 pre-registered speakers. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in those categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who are going to be speaking on topics that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Also, I want to remind folks that in compliance with the Washington State campaign laws regarding the use of public facilities during elections, no speaker may support or oppose a candidate for election or a ballot measure, and that includes one's own campaign. Anyone beginning to speak on those topics will be asked to stop. So with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Paul Clark.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Paul Clark. I'm speaking tonight in a personal capacity, not in my role as Parks Board member. Later tonight, you will be reviewing funding proposals for the Grand Connection, and I want to urge caution, especially when it comes to tax increases and long-term revenue diversions. The Grand Connection is a visionary idea, and I do support the goal of linking downtown 1.0 with downtown 2.0, but it should be properly prioritized relative to other transportation needs. This council approved a comprehensive plan that enables dramatic growth, but without the necessary infrastructure, that growth will be unsustainable. Right now, Bellevue is facing a transportation-infrastructure crisis. Intersections across the city are projected to fail in coming years due to growth, even as funding to fix them shrinks. And yet, we're talking about making a bike-ped crossing our main priority before addressing basic road functionality. That's like dessert, that's like serving dessert before the main course. It looks great, but it doesn't meet our real and present needs. If congestion goes unaddressed, we all feel it. Families lose precious time together, workers struggle to reach offices, customers can't get to our stores and our restaurants, and our city slowly becomes a harder place to live, work, and do business. If you choose to move forward with either of the Tier 1 funding options for the Grand Connection, you should be clear-eyed about the trade-offs. A tax increment financing district would siphon future property tax growth away from core services, locking it into one project for years and limiting our budget flexibility. Transportation Benefit District, on the other hand, would impose a new regressive tax, raising costs in a city that's already unaffordable for many. Before you commit to either approach, then, I would ask you to ask, are we solving Bellevue's most urgent problems first? Funding for the Grand Connection should be part of a larger plan that serves the majority of our residents, workers, and visitors, and keeps Bellevue moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Frost, who I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Frost, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Councilmembers, my name is Maria Frost. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs at Kemper Development Company here in Bellevue. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening on the Grand Connection crossing and potential funding sources brought forth by staff. We are disappointed to see the Transportation Benefit District identified as a Tier 1 potential funding source for the Grand Connection, and respectfully urge you to remove the TBD as a funding source for this project. Using TBD revenue, whether through a sales tax increase or CAR-TAPD, to fund a project that is primarily focused on economic development and placemaking is inappropriate. Funds designated for transportation should be used to meet critical transportation needs, and those needs in Bellevue, as you know, are both significant and growing. Bellevue's Transportation Department has reported a steep decline in transportation revenue resulting in limited funding availability beyond existing commitments in the CIP. City staff have emphasized the increasingly dire financial outlook for projects in the TFP. This is especially troubling, given the substantial growth outlined in the comp plan and the number of key corridors and intersections projected to fail for their worsening already significant congestion. Many intersections are operating at their new capacity already, anticipating long-awaited improvements in the TFP for which staff say there is limited or no money. If we want Bellevue to remain accessible and economically competitive, voter-approved TBD revenues should be directed toward projects that relieve congestion and improve mobility for vehicles, freight, and emergency services. This approach aligns with RCW, which authorizes TBD specifically to fund transportation improvements necessitated by existing or anticipated congestion. In contrast, the Grand Connection crossing is not intended to address congestion. Its primary goals are to enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety, support placemaking, and improve connectivity to East Rail and sound transit, and these are notable community goals. However, the project offers very limited transportation benefit in the context of Bellevue's greater mobility challenges. According to the city's own data, produced by Fair and Peers, the crossing is estimated to add 80 to 625 new bicycle and pedestrian trips by 2044 without a lid, or 275 to 860 with a lid. Even if these numbers doubled, it would not merit the label of a serious congestion relief project. And I share these numbers with you, not to diminish the Grand Connection concept and its other goals, but to emphasize that this is clearly not a priority transportation project at this time. Imposing TBD taxes to fund a Grand Connection crossing, especially without a public vote, would represent a serious misalignment of funding priorities and risk-eroding public trust. Private funding, not TBD taxes, should be in Tier 1, and the TBD should be preserved as a tool for future public engagement and voter-approved funding of transportation improvements that are essential to accommodate travel demand and keep Bellevue moving. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next two speakers, I believe, want to come up together, and that's Pearl Long and Patrick Bannon, though they are making separate comments.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council, City Manager Carlson, everyone here tonight. My name is Patrick Bannon. I'm president and CEO of the Bellevue Downtown Association. I'm joined by Pearl Long, who is Amazon Senior Manager of Public Policy. We are here tonight as co-chairs of the Friends of the Grand Connection, and I'd like to acknowledge a number of other friends who are here with us in the audience tonight. If you can raise your hands. The Friends Group was formed just two years ago and with one mission, and that is to support the Grand Connection crossing project and partner with the city to secure the resources needed to make it a reality. There has been considerable enthusiasm in our community and excitement surrounding this project, and we see that this enthusiasm is reflected in the growing number of supporters in the Friends Group. Our numbers continue to grow. We're here tonight to express our strong support for moving forward with the Grand Connection crossing project. The project checks the boxes on many desired needs for the city's future, especially as we grow, and improving mobility is one of them. It addresses a critical safety and connectivity gap for people walking, biking, or rolling across I-405. Current arterials are wide, fast-moving, and stressful to navigate. The crossing will create a safe, comfortable, multimodal link between downtown, East Rail, the two-line stations, Wilberton, and the neighborhoods east of I-405. This is the kind of investment that people will look back on years from now and see as an essential part of Bellevue's identity and growth story. We're excited about the new office of the Grand Connection and the hiring of Nathan Torgelson. We had a chance to meet with Nathan and look forward to working with him and his team in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, members of the council, and City Manager Diane Carlson. We appreciate that this is a significant undertaking by the city, both in the complexity of the project and in investment. And for that, we thank you for your leadership and encourage you to make this bold investment in Bellevue's future that will pay off in catalyzing growth and increasing economic development. As the city's consultant HR study reinforces why this is a right investment, it shows that this project will unlock development in Wilberton, strengthen downtown, and create long-term economic benefits for the city and region. For Amazon, this project is really about connecting people to opportunities, connecting jobs to housing in Wilberton in a sustainable way, and we remain firmly supportive of getting the Grand Connection crossing built to serve more than 4,000 people a day according to the city's Type-Size and Location Report, giving them a good alternative to get to and from downtown, and increasing mobility, access, and experience of being here, benefiting workers, residents, and visitors alike. Now with a funding framework in place, it's essential to keep all options on the table as we go deeper into evaluation. And the Friends will remain focused on advocating for private, philanthropic, state, and federal funding that will provide, hopefully, more flexibility to reduce the burden of local resources. This is the moment to be bold, and we look forward to continue to work with the city team consultants and under Nathan's leadership to support and work with the Friends to give us this, that this project will continue to move forward as memorable and doable. So tonight, we ask you to continue moving this project forward. We committed to staying at the table to make this a transformative project and a reality, and continue to work with you to engage all the stakeholders that the city will be working with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Alberts, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Alberts, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and councilmembers. My name is Jody Alberts, and I'm here on behalf of the Bellevue Chamber. I want to share our strong support this evening for the proposed code amendment to allow micro-mobility options like scooters in Bellevue. With Bellevue growing rapidly, our transportation system really needs to grow with it. Giving people more ways to get around safely and efficiently is essential for residents, visitors, and the thousands of employees who commute into Bellevue every day. From an access and connectivity perspective, many of our member companies have employees who rely on transit or other alternatives to driving. Scooters and other micro-mobility options would make it easier for them to get that crucial last mile from a bus stop or a light rail station to their workplace. This would help reduce single occupancy vehicle trips, ease parking demand, and give people more flexible ways to move around the city. We'd also encourage timely action on creating a permit process for a pilot program, so operations can begin after the code is updated. A pilot would give us valuable insights into how micro-mobility works here in Bellevue while offering immediate benefits to our workforce and community. And really, now is the time to build out these mobility options. With light rail crossing the lake next year, scooters and similar options can play a huge role in connecting stations to offices, shops, restaurants, and neighborhoods, really activating those areas. It's an opportunity to make that major transit investment even more impactful. So on behalf of the business community, I want to thank you for considering the amendment and urge you adopt it and move forward with the pilot program as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Court Olson.
Good evening, council and city staff. Good to see you all again. I'm here on behalf of the leadership team and the People for Climate Action Bellevue Chapter, and we want to comment on the sustainability presentation that you're going to get later today. In the agenda materials for the, get back away from this so it doesn't get so noisy. In the agenda materials for the sustainability presentation this evening on page 5, there are six bullet points that we want to call your attention to that we think are really, really critical and important. It reads, as I'm going to read to you here, "Meeting our 2050 carbon neutrality goal will require," and then it lists six bullet points. The first one is, "All new construction to be electric," and the state is essentially taking care of that in the Building Code Council. Number four of the four of the six bullets says, "Transitioning to 100% renewable energy," which Puget Sound Energy is diligently pursuing. So neither one of those are really city actions to consider, but there are three bullet points in that list of six that are city, are in the city's purview. The second one says, "Decarbonizing existing commercial and multifamily buildings." The third bullet says, "1,250 homes to be retrofitted with heat pumps annually." The fifth bullet point says, "Reducing annual vehicle miles traveled equivalent to taking over 31,000 cars off the road by 2050." The last bullet on the list, the city could play a role in, and that's 100% of vehicles registered to be electric. The state has mandated new car sales to be all-electric in 2035, but there's some complementary things that the city can do. The new sustainability plan proposed by the city staff tonight only scratches the surface of these requirements. It falls short of a sufficient strength to put us on a trajectory to reach the 2050 emissions target. We suspect that the new plan's weakness is due in large part to the lack of sufficient funds in the city's current biennium budget to scale new programs to the levels needed. Taking the necessary actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is a very serious budget issue. In PCA's analysis, the city can solve that problem in the next biennium. So we have a plan to do that. We'll be sharing that with you later, and we look forward to that further conversation. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Craig Speel.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel. I am a resident of downtown Bellevue. I'm writing to express my concern regarding the proposal to use the Transportation Benefit District funding to support the Grand Connection. While I appreciate and strongly support the vision behind the Grand Connection, I do not believe that TBD funding is appropriate mechanism for financing this project. The Grand Connection is a placemaking and urban design initiative, not transportation. Using TBD revenue, especially when basic transportation needs like sidewalk repair, curb cutouts, and road resurfacing have been delayed or stopped due to lack of funds, raises significant concerns. TBDs are governed by RCW 36.73, which outlines clear limits and limitations on the use of such funds. Council directing these funds towards a project that does not meet these criteria certainly could undermine public trust and put the city at legal risk. For context, two years ago this month, we sat here and talked about the same issue. Many community members raised concerns about the regressive nature of the potential TBD taxes and their broader need for fiscal restraint by the city. While I commend council for your work on affordable housing, we need now to look at the compounded effect of the increased taxes and fees that are making, is making Bellevue less affordable for many residents. Council spoke and said and assured the public that any TBD tax implications, implementation would be a last resort if no other revenue sources were available to meet core transportation needs. That threshold has not been met, and I recognize there's been strong advocacy from employers and corporate partners, but public funding must remain rooted in clear policy frameworks and community need, not special interest. I respectfully urge the council to remove the Transportation Benefit District as a potential source of funding for the Grand Connection, and if funds are needed, direct the city manager to evaluate other areas in the budget, including staffing levels and special project expenditures to identify funding mechanisms. In addition, I recommend that private funding for the Grand Connection be moved to Tier 1, not Tier 2, as I believe it was initially promoted. In summary, thank you for your time and continued service to the Bellevue community. I remain supportive of the Grand Connection and of all of your hard work of helping make Bellevue remain innovative and inclusive today and for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. That, with that comment, though, we did reach our maximum number of speakers sharing concern or opposition to the Grand Connection item, so we can hear no further on that item. The next speaker is Nicole Myers.
Hello. Greetings, mayor and councilmembers. I'm here today because the Planning Commission will be hearing about the Critical Area Ordinance Update tomorrow, and part of their packet is the assertion that we cannot follow the best available science and Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife recommendation for stream buffers because of council direction to maximize housing growth and redevelopment opportunities. I hope you will clarify for staff whether it is really your opinion that we should not plan to follow the best available science as we update the CAO. I'd like to remind everyone that we have recently added so much capacity for housing that while we were hoping to develop plans for 35,000 units, that is just a small part of the potential, and I really don't think we need to squeeze every last drop of growth potential out of these special areas that can provide wildlife corridors and other ecological services. For further context, last month, we updated our 2024 Tree Code to add a tree health provision that gives developers credit for planting more trees than they have room for on a site to avoid overcrowding the trees. And cottage developments are now allowed to have 70% lot coverage by structures for other middle housing that was only increased to 40%. In regards to the sustainability plan that you'll be hearing about tonight, we also just missed an opportunity to mandate EV readiness in middle housing. Although many of the new homes may be getting permitted right now, they are probably going to be often 1.5 to 2.5 million, and many of them will be very far from transit. Our ability to create and update housing is primarily limited by skilled labor, and it is a waste of electricians, drywallers, inspectors, and homeowners' time to open up the walls to add the wiring later. I also hope that you'll require scooters to use front lights at night rather than reflectors since pedestrians and park users don't come equipped with headlights to illuminate those reflectors. I hope you will consider a lower speed limit in parks, since they are a place I'm used to being able to give a toddler a bit of freedom to run around, and I really don't want a kid to get taken out by someone doing 15, nor do I want our parks to be turned into transportation shortcuts rather than being foremost for recreation. In the future, I hope we'll think carefully about who's involved in these discussions. I think the Parks and Community Services Board should have been included at the very outset. And again, my request to you tonight is to clarify for the CAO what we're doing on stream buffers and whether we are going to follow the best available science. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hayden Harvey.
Mayor Robinson, councilmembers, I'm Hayden Harvey, and I lead Lyme's Government Affairs Teams across the Western United States. I'm here tonight to express our strong support for the micro-mobility code amendments before you tonight. We appreciate Bellevue's leadership in updating outdated regulations and aligning with peer cities around Lake Washington, including Redmond, Seattle, Shoreline, Bothell, and Woodinville. These proposed changes are a meaningful step towards expanding access and offering more sustainable, convenient travel choices for residents, workers, and visitors alike. We know that Bellevue is ready for shared micro-mobility services. Since the last pilot project ended in 2019, our app has been opened nearly 80,000 times here in City of Bellevue. There's clear demand for more transportation options, especially as the two-line prepares to open across the lake and FIFA comes to Seattle in 2026. Now is the time to plan proactively and intentionally. Micro-mobility isn't just a convenience, it is a first-last-mile connector, a bridge to a more equitable and accessible city, and a climate action tool. We've engaged extensively with community members, and you've heard support from many of these partners across the board. There is real momentum, and I hope that we can count on your vote tonight to move this forward. It's also why we urge the council to encourage staff to advance a shared e-scooter and e-bike pilot as soon as possible. We understand that you want to get this right, and so do we. A thoughtful rollout takes time, and starting now allows us to be ready when the city and its riders need it most. We've heard your priorities and the community's concerns. Loud and clear, pedestrian safety, sidewalk etiquette, parking, tidiness, and accessibility are all top of mind. Lyme is committing, committed to working closely with city staff, stakeholders, and the community to ensure that these are addressed through smart planning and responsible operations. This pilot must reflect Bellevue's values. That means real collaboration, local investment, and shared commitment to success. Lyme stands ready to begin this process with you, and we're grateful for your leadership and respectfully ask for your support so we can take this important next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Matt Jack, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Jack, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, councilmembers. Again, my name is Matt Jack, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Bellevue Downtown Association to voice our continued support for updating the city's code to formally recognize and regulate motorized foot scooters. As emerging mobility options continue to grow in popularity, it's essential that we integrate these modes thoughtfully, supported by clear rules, safe infrastructure, and responsive management. This is about future-proofing Bellevue's transportation system and ensuring that we remain a forward-thinking, multimodal city. For the past four years, BDA members have consistently emphasized the need to include micro-mobility in downtown transportation discussions. Recognizing and regulating these devices is a key step forward to expanding our mobility network and reducing reliance on single-occupant vehicle trips. While the BDA hasn't taken a formal position on shared scooter services, we did endorse the city's 2018 Free Floating Bike Share Pilot, and we continue to support a pilot-based approach to curb management. If the pilot moves forward, we recommend that the pilot notifications be shared with impacted stakeholders, especially businesses that depend on curb access, and that feedback loops be built in to ensure that real-time adjustments can be made if challenges arise. Looking ahead, we encourage the city to take a broader view on micro-mobility. Beyond scooters, we're already seeing devices like e-skateboards, one-wheels hoverboards, and peddles bikes. Planning proactively and flexibly for this evolving landscape will help Bellevue stay ahead of the curve and reinforce our reputation as a vibrant, accessible, and sustainable urban center. Thank you for your leadership and continued partnership. The BDA remains committed to supporting Bellevue's multimodal future. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And with that comment, that was our third and final speaker, loud on the, in support of motorized foot scooters. With that, I will call our next speaker, who is Keith Swenson. Welcome.
Yeah, Mayor Robinson, councilmembers, good evening. It's good to be back with you again. My name is Keith Swenson. I reside at the Gardens of Town Square. We have a letter that will be arriving in your hands. I'm just going to touch on some of the major points and show you a graphic that you also will see in the letter. We, the 130 residents of the Gardens, have serious concerns about traffic issues, but we want to focus on the positive by first expressing our appreciation to the representatives of your police and transportation departments who recently met with a standing-room-only Gardens crowd. We also want to thank or to deliver a profound thanks to you, our elected leaders, for the positive traffic safety initiatives you have caused to be taken in the past few years, in the recent years. One, the reconstruction of 108th Avenue from Main to 12th, maintaining it as a traffic way but a safe traffic way. Two, the construction of the roundabout at 100th and 10th Street. Three, the installation of several lighted mid-bod, pedestrians' walkways. That's extraordinarily important to our group, of course. course. Regarding for your plans for the future, two articles in the most recent edition of the City Neighborhood News caught my attention. One titled "City Launches Safe Streets, Bellevue", and the second, "Bellevue to Begin Testing Adaptive Technology for All Road Users." Very interesting. The "Safe Streets" article noting the number of traffic fatalities and the number of injuries in 2024 was shocking. Some 36 deaths and serious injuries in these intersection accidents. The importance of reducing speed limits is illustrated in the graphic in this packet, in your packet. And I'm going to just briefly show that this is, and it's hard for you to see there, but you'll notice this blue tape that I added on at this point. This compares the likely percentage of death or injury from a traffic accident. These lines down here at the bottom reflect traffic speed. This dark blue line here is 20 miles an hour. This one is 25. You notice how the slope suddenly turns up, and that is very dramatic. Now--
Mr. Swenson, I apologize. Your time has expired, but I believe you had a letter, and you've given that to staff. Correct, yes, we have your letter.
Thank you very much for your time, and good to be here again. You will receive our letter after the meeting tonight.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one additional speaker, and that would be Paul Rude.
Thank you, Council. I read the meetings from 2024 where the allowable noise hours were increased. There were six oral art presentations, all representing commercial interest. The interest asked for extended hours only for downtown areas and only for commercial projects, yet council imposed extended noise hours on all of Bellevue. There was no outreach to the low-density communities. All of the rationalizations offered for extending noise hours are false. No contractor wants to work their crews 13 hours a day, get lower productivity, pay overtime, and risk accidents from tired workers. Extended hours are only a convenience given the contractors allowing them to bypass prudent scheduling. This will not shorten projects or promote affordable housing. Extending hours does not save cost, it displaces cost. The sum of what all affected residents would charge to allow noise into their homes each evening is the true cost of noise pollution. The city staff has no expertise on health impacts of noise or the private property right of reasonable enjoyment and did not solicit any. These should have been the primary determinants of noise regulations. Instead, they were ignored or given lip service. Department of Ecology's no comment was taken as implied sufficiency for human health protection. D O E never comments on local noise regulations. Mr. Maynard states that no one objected to increased noise. What about the 158 citizens who called in noise complaints? Do they not count? Did he reach out to them? Most of the noise complaints are after hours and go to Bellevue Police. There was no input on those complaints. The city noise regs are written around construction noise definitions. When you relax construction noise, remodel, do-it-yourself, and yard crew noise increases also. On noise, council is acting out of ignorance and fear, or worse, as Mr. Maynard put it, doing what is easiest for city staff. The city rationalizes their inaction on noise by deference to the building industry. Noise complaints are a call for increased regulation, not less. Here's what I need. For low-density Bellevue, I want you to reset the noise hours as follows. Monday to Thursday, 7 to 6, Friday, 7 to 5, Saturday, 9 to 3. This allows 60 hours per week for noise and the remaining 45 waking hours for quiet family life. I'd like to call out to the new council members to join with the two moderate members of the council and deliver the noise control that the citizens want. Thank you.
Thank you. That does bring us to the 30-minute mark. So that is the end of oral communications. There were a couple of speakers still left on the pre-registered list. I'd encourage you to email your comments to the council at council@bellevueva.gov. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a report of boards and commissions. I'll let the city manager introduce us.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, tonight we have the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board Chair here tonight, Carolyn Dermarkarian. She's with staff from our community development, economic development team, Lori Hoffman and Lizette Flores. They're here to give you an update on the proposed 2026 budget and strategic plan for the tourism promotion area and to also ask for your direction to incorporate that into the budget process this year. With that, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thank you so much, Council members. Thank you so much, City Manager. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. We're excited to share with you the 2026 strategic plan and budget for the tourism promotion area. With that, I'm going to hand over the bulk of the presentation to Liz and Caroline.
Thank you so much. After this presentation, we will request council to consider directing staff to return with legislation as part of the 2026 mid-biennial technical adjustment to support expenditure consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the B R T P A Advisory Board. This presentation will cover an overview of the T P A program, a review of 2024 and of 2025's progress so far, and finally, the overview of the 2026 annual budget and strategic plan.
Well, good evening, Mayor Robinson. Good evening, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and good evening, Council members. It's great to be here. Thank you. So to continue on this, we all know tourism is a powerful economic engine. Overnight visitors spend an estimate two and a half times their lodging costs locally, supporting restaurants, small businesses, attractions, and entertainment venues. Beyond economic impact, tourism also enhances residents' quality of life. The same amenities that draw visitors, like vibrant food scenes, cultural and recreational offerings, as well as well-maintained public spaces, are equally valued by the community. Here is how the process works. This will be a reminder of how T P A works. So lodging business collects a $2.50 per-night fee, which is submitted to the Washington Department of Revenue. These funds are distributed to the city of Bellevue, acting as the legislative authority for the B R T P A. All revenues are maintained in a separate account and not commingled with the city's general fund. The city maintains separate financial accounts for the Bellevue and Redmond zones. Revenues collected within each zone are dedicated exclusively to tourism promotion in that area, ensuring local investments benefit their respective communities. So also, as a reminder, the advisory board is comprised of four representatives from each zone and made up of tourism and hospitality industry experts. This board plays a key role in shaping the annual budget and strategic plan for tourism promotion area. Funds. Since August 2023, the board has met regularly to collaboratively develop informed recommendations. This evening, we're here to present those proposals for your review and consideration. The materials presented were developed in close partnership with the organizations currently contracted to administer T P A funds in each city, Visit Bellevue, and One Redmond. So on this slide, you're going to see here the current members of the advisory board, representatives of their communities. Both T P A zones are equally represented on the advisory board. There are four spaces for the Redmond stakeholders and four for Bellevue stakeholders. We have one seat vacant at the moment and have just concluded an application period. The advisory board recommends candidate to the city manager for appointments.
And now I will present to you some highlights showing what T P A fees can do for the community. We can see exciting developments in both cities. In the Bellevue Zone in 2024, T P A funds have helped bring in 2.2 million overnight visitors to the city, generating 1.9 billion in economic impact. Visit Bellevue has completed its update of the Destination Development Plan, laying ground for the development of tourism in the city for the next 10 years. Innovative programs to guide visitors through the city were launched, including safer food tours, highlighting local gastronomy and businesses. The Bellevue Airport Shuttle takes visitors to and from S E A Airport from convenient locations in downtown Bellevue, while Bell Hub has continued to provide convenient rides and has even expanded its fleet to include a larger A D A compliant vehicle. Exciting tours will allow visitors to enjoy our region's natural beauty, such as a wine and waterfalls tour. T P A investment has played a pivotal role in this growth. There are several notable achievements to highlight from the Redmond Zone as well. Based on 2023 occupancy data, the city of Redmond welcomed over 400,000 overnight visitors, 15% increase, reflecting strong tourism growth. To further advance these efforts, One Redmond has expanded its tourism staff, bringing in additional industry expertise. A strategic partnership has also been established with Woodinville Wine Country in collaboration with the city of Redmond to amplify regional appeal. Additionally, targeted niche marketing initiatives are underway, positioning Redmond to capture attention in emerging tourism segments. One exciting example on the horizon, the launch of dog-friendly tourism experiences. Without T P A funding, this growth would not be possible.
Okay, we will now turn our attention to the 2026 proposed budgets and strategic plans. Budgets for both zones adhere to allowable uses and follow the same formats. Revenues will be used in adherence to inter-local agreement for activities designed to increase tourists and convention business. While the framework is shared, each zone's budget is independently developed to reflect its distinct tourist priority and community needs. Please note that the full budget and high-level work plans have been provided as an attachment. Final scopes of work will come to council during contracting process later in the year. So on this slide, you'll see some of the highlights from the Bellevue Zone strategic plan. Visit Bellevue has a variety of programs and initiatives in their strategic plan, all of which aim to make the city a desirable place to visit. This plan is guided by the recently completed Destination Development Plan. Many of these programs have started, but in 2026 will see significant expansion and new offerings within program areas. Culinary tourism continues to grow, positioning Bellevue as an attractive food and beverage destination. This includes culinary newsletters and video series hosted by celebrity chefs. Walking tours will take visitors around the city, and self-guided tours are in the works, providing an easy way for people to learn more about Bellevue on their own schedule. Also, the sales team is very hard at work with their expanded teams, helping to fill room nights in less frequented areas and also seasons. Sustainability continues to be a focus for Visit Bellevue, with a formal sustainability plan being developed to ensure tourists can develop in a way that will continue to enrich our community for years to come. From the new Destination Storage Team comes Bellevue Bound, a podcast which will deepen our understanding of Bellevue's dynamic and diverse identity. Along with Bell Hub, which will continue, Bike Hop, a popular electric bike program in several hotels, is set to expand, allowing even more people the opportunity to get around the area in a sustainable and fun way, offering our hotels a valuable amenity to attract guests. On this slide, we see some of the overall goals for Bellevue Zone for 2026. Our year-to-date data tells us that when visitors come to Bellevue, their top five locations are Seattle Airport, Pike Place Market, Microsoft Campus, T-Mobile Park, and Marymore Park. And by making Bellevue an attractive place to visit when they come through the area for whatever the reason, we want to show Bellevue at its best, to inspire exploration of the city and return visits. In 2026, we hope to welcome 2.5 million visitors. That's a 300,000 increase from the 2024 benchmark. Increases to hotel occupancy are also of importance. By achieving these goals, we would see an economic impact of $2.1 billion, in addition to $200 million plus in a local economic impact. These are funds being reinvested into our communities and small businesses, helping to ensure Bellevue remains a vibrant, welcoming, and prosperous city for both residents and visitors. We'll take a look at this graph. So you will see here in 2024, Bellevue welcomed over 2.2 million overnight visitors, officially surpassing the pre-pandemic levels. This milestone highlights the significant recovery and ongoing momentum in our tourist sectors. Goals for 2025 and 2026 reflect a sustained trajectory of growth. Continued investment in the T P A will help us sustain and build on this successful growth. So for the Redmond, we have here Redmond's strategic plan allows the zone to continue its capacity building, which will bring positive returns in the future. Because Redmond does not have a convention center, identifying creative spaces for events is a priority, with the development of a master venue list in the works. Collaborating with hotels, the implementation of a targeted destination says program will be in the works, with the intent of increasing group business and overnight stays. Redmond will implement new data analytic tools, allowing a deeper understanding of tourists' data, which will help grow the foundation for tourist growth in the city. The city of Redmond has recently completed its tourist master plan, and through collaboration with the city of Redmond, there is an opportunity for T P A funds to help complement the city's plan. So for the Redmond Zone, the goal is to increase overnight visitors by 5% by the end of 2026, bringing in about 520,000 overnight visitors to enjoy the city and bringing an additional economic impact of $13.9 million. Doing so will take a multi-layered approach. To get visitors around the city, transportation options remain a priority. With T P A funds, they will evaluate and enhance transportation options, which will get visitors around Redmond and its neighboring tourist attraction. Redmond is also strategically developing specialized tourist experiences that will set the city apart, enhancing its identity as an exciting and unique destination for today's travelers, and dog tourism is on the way. So you will see here finally the budget that will allow all of this to happen. The differing amounts allotted to each bucket, and these numbers are after Department of Revenue and City of Bellevue Administration fees. These buckets reflect the individual needs and priorities for each individual zones. Each zone currently has funds held in reserve. Visit Bellevue holds roughly 256,000 in reserves and will keep it that way, and Redmond holds about 480,000 in reserves, budgeting 75,365,000 remaining in the reserves at the end of 2026. So at the end of 2026, both zones will have approximately 8% in reserves. So these numbers are a projection, and our maximum amount for the 2026 calendar year, any additional revenue generated will go into each zone's reserves.
Thank you, Carolyn. We will now ask that council consider directing staff to return with the legislation as part of the 2026 mid-biennial technical adjustment to support expenditure consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the B R T P A Advisory Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair Carolyn. You still have maintained your enthusiasm. You still have maintained your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And support for this program, which is very good. And you see the progress that we've seen for the last year. I do have some questions, maybe just for information only. We have your requested budget. Do we have your 2025 budget? So I know what kind of comparison increase are we looking at? And which may give me some idea of the expectation for each dollar increase, what are we gaining? That's one question. So second is, you know, we, I don't have any real appreciation between the reserve contingency. You do have a very healthy contingency and healthy reserve. So what do you think are the reason rationale for having this kind of contingency and reserve? What went into the thinking of that? That's two questions. Third question, it's relating to Redmond, which, you know, I don't have much to do with it. But just in comparison with Bellevue, their administration research for us is 110,000, for them is 272,000. That seems to be, for me, you know, hard to understand why, because they are a much smaller operation. So maybe you can maybe address those three questions. Thank you.
So to start off with a budget for last year, this is something, go ahead, Lauren.
Sure, so we can absolutely make the 2025 budget available to you. I'm sorry, I don't have it up here at the table with me. I will note that the significant difference between '25 and '26 is a fairly robust spend on the Redmond side. So Redmond has used those first years to kind of build up capacity. Here in 2026, you're going to see them start delivering more. So that's why you're seeing that kind of draw for their reserves. Additionally, in the question of reserves versus contingency, the reserves are held here at the city of Bellevue and they are not available for spend. So they are not contracted to the two zone administrators, Visit Bellevue and One Redmond. The contingency is part of their contracted amount. So it is there for contingency if something in their budgeted areas ends up being a little bit more expensive than they had planned. There's a little bit of wiggle in those contracts so that they can continue to deliver services. The reserves are not available throughout the year for that wiggle.
Can I follow up with just a question in terms of contingency? Is there a standard percentage normally you use? Like, you know, industry standard or in your business, 5%, 10%, 20%?
Yeah, we're aiming for around 10.
How did you arrive at that number?
Yeah, we're aiming for around 10.
Sorry?
We're aiming for around 10.
10%? That's, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Newan House.
We appreciate the great presentation and certainly we're seeing the benefits of this tourism promotion area. Just one quick question on the festival and events. Just curious, I'm assuming that the advisory board then makes a selection in terms of which events or which festivals to participate in and to fund or partially fund. What's the criteria for that?
So on the Visit Bellevue side, the festivals and event support really is the Visit Bellevue Festival and Events incubator. So that is, within Visit Bellevue, they have their own selection committee, a committee within their advisory board that helps identify which businesses. And they have a great criteria for overnight stays and the minimums that allow different funding levels.
And then is there a way for those organizers of those festivals to request funds for their festival?
Yep, so they apply through Visit Bellevue, they can request those funds, and there's a whole review committee.
Okay, and they can find that information where?
Online at Visit Bellevue's website.
Perfect, thank you.
So I have a question. I was wondering how much the work from this will apply to FIFA? Are we?
We're currently finalizing our strategy with our partners, and we'll have more information very soon.
Okay, what do you mean by very soon, like?
We can make the information available for council after the recess as we continue to work with our partners.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Any other comments? Yes.
One comment. This is really great. The only comment, very quick, is as you consider your, this is following up on Councilmember Lee's comment around reserves and contingencies, but just as you think about reserves going into 2026, one suggestion I have is to really contemplate the volatility we have for state and federal funding and think about the implications of that and how you set aside the reserve percentages, given that volatility. I don't know if that's not required, like, this is just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I, so I see that we're aiming for 2.5 million overnight visit state. And then for the big picture and how much we're bringing and spending on the marketing communication, what is the, I guess, what other metrics are we measuring the successful return on marketing and communication?
So luckily, we have a plethora of amazing metrics from our partners at Visit Bellevue. If we were to include them all, you would not have enough paper in your packets. But many of the things that we see in our marketing and our communications are around social media engagements. We watch open rates on emails, we look at click-through rates and the cost per click that we get. We look at how many new subscribers there are, how many website referrals. There's a ton of amazing metrics within our comms and marketing. We could absolutely make more of that available for council if you'd like.
And the follow-up question is with, you know, we are in Bellevue, we're investing more in marketing communication, you know, sometimes it's messaging. But what are the tangible items we can see every day we're spending? Like Bellhop is one of them. Like what other things are we able to see on the money that's invested to everybody who's visiting Bellevue?
I think some of the good things that you can really index on are programs like Bike Hop. So we love Bellhop, it's fabulous. If you're staying in one of our hotels, you have access to a resort level amenity with our Bike Hop program. You get to check it out for free from the front desk, take it around, explore our wonderful trails. We also have the Welcome Center that Visit Bellevue maintains, which comes to events, we get to interact with it, you got the selfie station. And of course, we all love seeing Belle the Bobcat, which is something that is funded from the TPA as we do our Japanese Tourism Campaign. And a lot of that stuff has amazing returns. Our Japanese Tourism is up 13% year-over-year in large part because of that campaign and the work funded by the TPA.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation, certainly appreciate this program, thankful that it more than pays for itself, which is something that's hard to beat. Appreciate, too, the bump in tax revenue that the city gets as a result of the Visit Bellevue efforts. Bellhop, Bike Hop, the shuttle to the airport, I mean, those are really wonderful amenities, and I know a lot of folks are attracted to those. And I know, of course, Visit Bellevue does a lot more. So appreciate the check-in, I think this is amazing work and definitely in favor of approving the advisory board's budget. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. So is there a motion?
I move to direct staff to return with legislation as part of 2026 mid-biennium technical budget process to support expenditure consistent with the annual budget and strategic plan as recommended by the Bellevue-Redmond Tourism Promotion Area Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, next, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have three study session items. We're going to do the first one and then we'll take a little break. We'll have our city manager go ahead and introduce.
Mayor, I do have a couple of city manager report items.
I skipped right over you.
Would you mind if I go back on that one? Okay. The first one is a report or an update on our Republic Services work stoppage. And for that, I would like to ask Wendy Wyker, Municipal Relationship Manager with Republic Services, to come forward. So last week, I did share that the stoppage Republic Services suspended collection due to an out-of-state labor disruption. And that did affect our Bellevue residents and our businesses. And it did create also a pretty frustrating and challenging situation for everyone who relies on and counts on those essential services. Fortunately, as of yesterday, Republic was able to resume the garbage recycling and compost collection for our residential customers. And that included collecting all the material that was accumulated during the time of the stoppage. I want to recognize our Utilities Department, who throughout the stoppage was in contact with Republic Services every day, multiple times a day, and worked with Republic to stand up the measures during the stoppage that included our free waste drop-offs, locations, and then also worked with Republic to issue, to have service credits issued to our customers automatically. There were many other departments that helped in that work, transportation, Bellevue Police, parks, and in addition to the Bellevue School District. So thankful to all of the department's staffing and the school district for helping that. I'm really grateful for the leadership of the Utilities Department and all the staff who engaged in this. We couldn't have done this without their hard work throughout. Many times, it was seven days during the week. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Wendy, who, to give her an opportunity to say a few words about Republic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, council members and staff. First, on behalf of Republic Services, I want to apologize for the out-of-area labor dispute that caused significant inconvenient service disruptions to our Bellevue residents. I want to assure you, our local unions have good working relationships with our Puget Sound management teams. This was a solidarity strike for our drivers with their Boston-based colleagues that was unwelcome yet honored here. As you know, the work stoppage started on Wednesday, July 9th, and continued through Friday, July 18th. Eight challenging days for all of us. I am happy to report that with the support of our regional and national resources to pull from, the Bellevue Republic Services team was able to get enough relief drivers to sustain our commercial and multifamily collections in addition to our critical and high-volume customers. Further, and with immense gratitude to Bellevue's staff for helping us organize and communicate them, Republic Services was able to deploy and staff free-waste drop-off events for Bellevue residents last Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday. The feedback from these events was positive, and Bellevue residents were particularly thankful to have the flexibility to bring all three waste streams to those events at times that were convenient to them, especially that Saturday event. We ended up collecting 223 tons of material. That means on average, each site collected the equivalent of about 5,000 households on a normal collection day, or about the weight of 45 adult elephants. Finally, as of yesterday, July 21, we are back to normal collections operations and collecting all accumulated material at no additional charge. And we will continue to do so for the next two weeks through August 8th, with the only ask that garbage be limited to typical household waste. And I want to end with the good news that for our contract and with the city, Republic Services is also providing billing credits to all Bellevue customers who were inconvenienced by this service disruption from day one. Those credits will be the service portion of their rate based on the size of their garbage can. Those credits will automatically be on our Bellevue customer's next bill, so there's no need to call us to ensure they are applied. Let me close with a final word of gratitude for your Bellevue staff team. Our years of partnership allowed us all to quickly organize and manage a tough, dynamic situation. John Guyer, Scott Edwards, Lucy Liu, thank you so much for your support and great work these past weeks. My team and I are so sorry for the inconvenience and added work all around. We are so happy to be back, serving Bellevue with our 99.9% reliability for the almost 300,000 pickups we do in Bellevue every month. Thank you for your time tonight, council. Again, my sincere apologies and eternal gratitude.
Thank you so much for coming to talk to us. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And in a really nice announcement today that came out last week, I would like to reintroduce to you and the community our new fire chief, Chief Dave Tate, who has been attending the council meetings every week, I believe, since he was named as the acting chief in April. He is not new to the city, he's not new to the department. He's been with the city for 28 years, and he has served in so many roles within the department. He, I have great confidence in his ability to lead this department, continue and uphold the great service that this department is known for within the city, with high standards, compassion, and skill in serving Bellevue residents and also our communities that we contract with. So our community will have an opportunity to meet Chief Tate, if they have not yet, in some of the upcoming open houses. And I hope you will just congratulate him and welcome him to this new role. Chief Tate, could you stand so we can see you? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, great to have you, Chief. Okay, we already did the consent calendar, and we have three study session items. We're going to do one of them first, then we'll take a break, so go ahead and introduce.
Thank you. You've heard tonight about the Grand Connection Crossing. It is a significant undertaking for the city. We've been working on this for years. And what it will do is, of course, extend the Grand Connection across I-405, knitting together downtown with Wilberton and the East Trail Corridor. We have briefed council in previous council meetings on the steps to move this project from the 30% design to final design and construction, including the process that's required to gain state approval for the general contractor construction method. We've also shared the steps in previous presentations about our plans to engage other governmental entities in our discussions about tax increment finance and the broader community about the revenue tools that might be available to support this project and other transportation needs. So tonight is a step in that process, and that is to share an outline of the high-level funding plan, which identifies a set of funding options that can be used to support the project. And having that laid out is really a central component to gaining that state approval for the alternative construction method. So we're not asking for any decisions tonight about implementing any of these funding tools. You will hear more about the next steps related to that in the presentation. And with that, I will introduce Nathan Torgelson, who is leading the Office of Grand Connection. So his first presentation with you tonight. Deputy City Manager, Jenicee Atkins. Anthony Gill, Office of the Grand Connection. And Chief Financial Officer, John Risha. All here to give you this presentation tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jenicee.
All right, thank you, City Manager. And hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight to give you another update and seek your feedback on the Grand Connection. Tonight, we are seeking your direction to consider directing us to move forward with our application, as the city manager said, for state approval at the State's Committee for Alternative Delivery and to move ahead with steps necessary to prepare to fund the next phase of the Grand Connection program, which we will talk about in depth. So our run-of-show for this evening includes a handful of program updates, which my colleagues will help out with. And then we will turn toward the funding proposal at menu, pardon me, menu of funding tools that the city manager mentioned. My colleague, Mr. Risha, will walk through that. And then we'll come back and talk about next steps and your feedback and direction for us. All right, so a handful of program updates. We were last before you in March. That was the last time we gave you an update on the Grand Connection here at city council. And a number of things have happened. We've been busy at work since we came before you to get your feedback and blessing to go ahead. And so I want to highlight a few of those, beginning with our establishment of the Office of the Grand Connection. The city of Bellevue has never really embarked upon anything quite like this before. It is rather unprecedented. An incredible team of matrixed professionals across many different departments had been working on this project. It's been a priority of the city council since 2014. This is something that we had been really pushing forward and forward and forward in that kind of aggregated manner for a long time. Now that this is becoming a really complex public works program, along with partnerships with developers, our Downtown Association and others, we felt it was really important to really pull together a dedicated core team, a nucleus of staff to facilitate efficiency, decision-making, accountability, and execution. We are delighted that we have been able to hire Nathan Torgelson, who joins us as the director of this office and has three decades of experience facilitating public-private partnerships. and has three decades of experience facilitating public-private partnerships, agreements with developers in the public sector, in multiple cities in King County, and can really bring a lot of that skill set to really make us get to the next level. I will talk for a few moments about what happened during the legislative session, which feels like a long time ago, but it becomes relevant here again. So we made the Grand Connection a priority in our adopted state legislative agenda for 2025. That had two components. We sought two things from Olympia in that agenda. One was a request for $900,000 to make capital improvements to City Hall Plaza. The west end of the crossing will come right across City Hall Plaza, and a lot of things will have to happen to really make that successful, because a lot of different pedestrians and cyclists and other people will be coming across the bridge or going onto that crossing. But then, as they come right here to this intersection, it is going to be where you have to cross some lanes of traffic. There will also be bus rapid transit. The K-line is intended to go right across there. There are a lot of complicated things that will happen there. And there's also some programming, activation, wayfinding. A lot of things will have to happen on that plaza. We sought $900,000 for that improvement. We came away with $250,000. We're very excited about that. That will really help us advance that work, because we want to be extremely thoughtful about how we welcome people off of the crossing into downtown. The other thing that we sought was a major investment from the state. This crossing is going to connect, I liked, Downtown 1.0 to Downtown 2.0 over I-405. We felt like the state had a very clear interest in helping support this program, and we sought up to $50 million in a state transportation package. Unfortunately, a package did not come together, and our champions in the legislature said, is there something else that we can do to help finance and move this project forward? What else could be done? Because we are not doing a funding package. And we said, if you were able to give us a modified version of tax increment financing authority, that could be something that we could put into a financial stack to help fund the program. John will talk a little bit later about what the details of that look like. And then, at the very end, I'll come back and talk about some of the next steps following our council meeting. And I will hand it all the way over to my colleague Anthony Gill for the next couple of program updates.
Yeah, thank you, Jenicee. So I have two fun updates to share with you all tonight. So the first is related to our Community Programming Fund. And I'm really excited to share that the city's new Community Programming Fund will support 37 organizations and individuals this summer and fall in providing free public activities across a variety of public spaces across Bellevue. The application period for this program was open from April 1st to May 26th, with outreach to community organizations and event producers all over the east side, and actually, the entire region. And our community response was really robust. We received 99 applications totaling almost $900,000 in requests. The funded programs, the ones that were selected, vary from outdoor storytelling sessions for families focused on South Asian cultural traditions, to free community swing dancing lessons, you might have seen that outside on City Hall Plaza last week, to a Frunk or Treat Halloween event featuring electric vehicles, which just very much fits the Bellevue ethos. This grant program is funded by council's $75,000 allocation in one-time funds for program support and fee reductions, and from $100,000 from the Public Space Management Program. And I do want to share with you all and with the community that a list of supported events and programs is available on the city's website at bellevuewa.gov/cpf. And if you search for Community Programming Fund, it will pop up. The other exciting thing that we are in the midst of rolling out is a new interactive engagement pilot, which allows you to learn more about points of interest along the Grand Connection. And you can also share ideas and input with the city on future amenities and priorities. So actually, starting today, these rolled out across the Grand Connection corridor. You'll be able to scan a QR code at 16 different locations to launch a conversation with the digital chatbot. And even better, we're partnering with Visit Bellevue, so that you're not just chatting with a nameless AI tool, you're actually chatting with our mascot, Belle the Bobcat's digital persona. The tool is available in nine different languages to maximize access. And we're really excited to see what conversations and ideas that this pilot can inspire. It'll be running through this year, all the way through next summer. With that, I'll turn it to Nathan.
So, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. First of all, I just want to say I'm so excited to be here. This is my 16th day in Bellevue City Hall, and you all have been so welcoming. And the city family and the broader community have all been fantastic. And again, delighted to be here. So in mid-August, we have a deadline to submit our application for an alternative delivery of this project to the state. We are working with two consultants to put this together. HNTB is helping us with our application, and WSP is our design consultant. Alternative delivery in this example is our use of General Contractor Construction Manager. This is called GCCM, which I think you're all familiar It is really important for this project to bring these two consultants on at the same time. It will help with value engineering, it will help reduce our risk with the project, and it will also help us keep on budget for the project. For the GCCM, we will be presenting to a state committee on September 25th, and that's an important deadline for us to move forward. So, as part of the Grand Connection project, we will be maintaining a 40-foot width over Interstate 405. The design has changed a little bit. We have removed the nodes. But again, this is a crucial crossing over the interstate. We will be prioritizing public space on the City Hall Plaza side. And we will be partnering with several private property owners to enhance the connection. You're all familiar with KG Properties, that is to the east of 405. That's an important connection that we will be partnering with them on, and will ultimately connect to the East Rail, which will make a fantastic connection for this project. There are also incredible placemaking opportunities at Lincoln Center, and also with legacy properties adjacent to the 405 Crossing. So again, this is a fantastic opportunity for the city of Bellevue, and really delighted to be here.
Mayor, deputy mayor, council members. As we get into this next piece, I want to do just a moment of table setting. What we're doing tonight is bringing forward the mix of different potential tools. We've likened this to if you're going out to purchase a home, and you go to your bank beforehand, and you get pre-qualified for a maximum amount that you could actually utilize to go after that. You don't know yet what the exact amount's going to be, and there's time and effort to make that selection. We're going to start the process, and because of the tools that we have, our timeline is a little bit truncated of what it normally might be. And having the gift of the tax increment financing capacity available to us, it came with one of those first constraints, which is the limitation of time. And we'll talk a little bit about this. As we talk about the types of tools that we think are the right mix of things, but not yet what the specifics will be. And I'll talk about as well, when we think the right times for those conversations, as we gain more knowledge, gain more partnership with our community and you, on what the specific mix will be when we get to it. So with that, as we think about the Grand Connection Crossing, we're targeting a project that is roughly speaking, a 150 to $200 million project. We believe that this will be made with a mix of funds, some of which may come in the form of donations from our friends or from others. Some of it will come in the form of things from the state, or perhaps in the future, from the federal government. But where we have to start, because of where we're at, in going to the state and to a state commission, we actually need to start with what are the things that you, as a council, control? What else are we going to look at? And then what is our tier three, which is the funds of last resort, if we need to? As we think about that, we start with the tax increment financing. Given that your guidance and our policy basis is that growth pays for growth, tax increment financing focuses solely on that area, and then increase in value associated with development that will happen, that is projected to happen with that time. The challenge that comes with it is normally you might take a year to two years to develop the partnerships and the relationships to establish the tax increment area and do all of that work. We actually are limited in time by the state to getting to a decision on the tax increment area by June 30th of 2026. We've already assembled a team and bringing in consulting support in taking those steps. We're engaged right now, actually, with the community of developers who are the most likely to be developing those spaces, to understand the plans and opportunities, so we can help identify what that specific area is. As we think about that, we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of it. We also then look at what else do we have, and what else, what other opportunities are there for you as a, from a council manic standpoint? Yes, we heard some testimony tonight about Transportation Benefit District. That is a corridor of transportation that is already identified within our transportation plans. It has the opportunity. It does not necessarily say that you will use it, or you won't use it, but we believe that is part of that first portion of the stack of investments. There's sales tax and a vehicle license fee associated with it. When we think about that next piece, if I go back to our mortgage analogy, there's always going to be some cash you bring in upfront. We don't know what those cash amounts are. And as our friends are working through their process, and others, and changes at the federal and state level, we know that there's going to be some investments that will be able to reduce the amount that is associated with tax increment financing or Transportation Benefit District. But the philanthropic or private funds, if we had transmission capacity added to it, there might be a utility that participates in it. There's federal and state grants, should those become available. There might even be a local improvement district that might be an appropriate piece. We believe that there is time for those conversations, but right now, what are the right kinds of things to bring to the state, that our capacity is there? And then finally, if we have not been able to fund it, and we're continuing forward, there is the opportunity to utilize some BNO capacity, or Business and Occupancy Tax capacity, or some of our banked property tax capacity. I'll touch on those very briefly. As we think about the tax increment financing, we know that we're going to be back this fall to talk with you more about tax increment financing, and go through some deep conversations about what we think the district might be, what its capacities are. One of the big changes we got through the legislature, normally, the state's tax increment financing legislation provides for one or two districts with a total value of 200 million of current assessed value. In downtown Bellevue, that equates to about half a block. So they gave us a half billion dollars, or $500 million worth of current assessed value capacity, which provided us with an opportunity to be more thoughtful about what we could see as growth development. Because it's that incremental value over today's values, that though all of those taxes are associated with us. One of the things that comes with that challenge, though, is the state also said, while you don't, in the normal TIF, you don't have to go to the other jurisdictions. With the special legislation they've provided to us and this great opportunity, we also do need to go get an affirmative yes from each of the six or seven other jurisdictions, including King County and Sound Transit. Each one has to individually agree to their, to their portion of participation.
Why don't you list all six for us?
Let's see if I can do this.
I can fill her.
Okay. King County, Sound Transit, King County Library District, the...
EMS and Flood.
EMS and Flood, yes, thank you, from the county, the Port of Seattle.
That's it.
And that's it. So that was six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I focus on the key ones that I know are going to be really interesting dialogues, because there's a lot going on in the county right now. And I think we'll have some big conversations there. But those need to get that affirmative before we actually enact the district, so that they're bought in, so we know what the value of that is. As we're building and think about building a stack of blocks, we believe the TIF is your foundation component. And so how we bring them into being partners with us in that conversation will be a really important part of the work. We think at our first blush, and we have a consultant onboard helping us, that the TIF has the capacity over its 25-year life to generate about $50 to $100 million worth of revenues, which is based off of the value of what we think the construction process, project is, is a significant portion of it. When we think about the Transportation Benefit District, there's two council manic tools that are readily available to you. The district already exists, you did that some time ago. There's not been any proposal to utilize any of those funds. This could be a space where you wanted to look at vehicle license fee or sales tax. We're not suggesting one or the other. The vehicle license fee generates about $2 million a year, based off $20 vehicle license fee. If we think about that 20 to 30-year period, we're really talking about 60-plus million dollars of capacity. Whether we utilize that or not, again, it's a tool. The sales tax, one-tenth of a percent, generates about $10 million a year here in Bellevue. So those capacities are there. The next tier, which is that cash, which reduces the amount we would look to the other sources, include things like, as I mentioned, philanthropic or private funds. It includes our federal grants. We are hopeful that the opportunity for federal participation comes back during our early process. We will look forward to capitalizing on that if it does. If we have some spaces where there's an ability for other participation from other funds or other jurisdictions, we want to identify those upfront, so again, we can bring down the amount of financing that we need to do. There's potential for state grants if they get to a transportation package or other opportunities. And again, there could be an opportunity for a lid, though that is a whole nother process in and of itself. When it comes to the final pieces of BNO tax or banked capacity, these to us, we know that you have a lot of very important needs that are ahead of us. And as we talked just last week at our conversation on the forecast, we know that there are some things right before you that you are very concerned about. We want to make sure we're reserving those capacities as much as possible. But for your reference, the BNO has about $5 to $7 million of capacity, depending upon the calculation. And then the banked property tax, there's about $7 million of general tax capacity available to you.
Thank you, John. All right. We will talk about next steps and what happens here ahead of you. So as I mentioned earlier, we were here in the spring to talk to you about issuing a contract to get help from, it turns out to be HNTB, to pursue the professional support to go after that alternative delivery construction method. Thank you for your support in doing that. Now we're here to get your feedback and direction on that conceptual financial plan, so that we can include that. That is our preauthorization letter to the state committee that we would go in front of in September. And so it really is an important part of making sure that we are, that we're real, that we're really doing something. And then we will, as John said, we will come back in the fall with two purposes for your next approval and action. One is to give you the analysis that is currently in flight on... One is to give you the analysis that is currently in flight on TIF, to really talk through the specific impacts of what it will look like, positive, neutral, or otherwise with any of the taxing districts and with local property owners. Then we will, if we're successful at the State Committee in September, we will want your okay to proceed and engage, you know, post some contract opportunities for final design and pre-construction. That would be what we would also want your direction to go and do next. I will mention a little bit more specific, kind of jumping off of where John left on TIF. As you heard earlier, that analysis, understanding the development goals and plans of specific property owners and developers, we're gathering that information now piece by piece. We have a professional consultant on board who has helped a number of other jurisdictions implement TIF. And so he's doing that analysis right now and we should have that complete by the end of the summer or early September. We want to bring that to you in late September or October. So we will come back to you with more detailed information right now. Right now, we have the broad estimate, that ballpark figure that we have been given by him, but we want to get to a much more granular estimate for you. And so we will have that information later on. Similar and related, after our discussion tonight, we do plan to reach out more formally to the other taxing districts. As John talked about, we need to ask for their partnership and approval in this process. We wanted to start that conversation with you. It felt like it was important to not get out in front of you as our decision makers, but that is something that we will do next. We don't have that analysis in hand yet and we know that will be important to them. We want to give them concrete information to influence how they receive our request for partnership and participation. So we will reach out next to talk to them about their perspective on our vision for the Grand Connection and for our shared prosperity in the corridor. So we're looking forward to working with King County and the Port and Sound Transit to do that. And we really look forward to continuing as we've really laid out to keep you apprised at many key decision points because this only happens with your buy-off and direction. But we have to, we have to start by giving you a menu and letting you really give us feedback about our next steps. So that is about it and we are eager to hear your feedback and thoughts on direction.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was a great presentation. Let's start with Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Good to see you all. Nathan, welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Certainly look forward to working with you on the Grand Connection as it continues to gain momentum. I'm a huge fan of the Grand Connection and appreciate the vision that community members, my past and present council colleagues and city staff have had to create it. The Grand Connection is going to have a tremendous impact on our city and on the folks who move along it. It's interesting to consider that it directly supports every other agenda item tonight, sustainability, micro-mobility, and tourism. The Grand Connection, once complete, is going to provide a critical, environmentally friendly transportation connection from East Trail and Wilberton into our jobs and entertainment core. It supports housing in Wilberton and all along and near the Grand Connection. We have more affordable housing coming to Bellevue and the Grand Connection provides a low-cost transportation option to go with it. The Grand Connection, much like the High Line in New York, also adds to the city's parks and open space. It supports tourism and will give folks the ability to walk, roll, or even ride a bike hop e-bike safely from Maidenbauer Bay to the Wilberton Trestle. The Grand Connection is a big project for the city. And of course, there is some risk with any big project, but we've done big very well before and been thankful we did. You can just take a look at the Downtown Park. I appreciate the detailed funding options that you presented tonight in the agenda memo and in briefings. The tiers are well organized and ranked and you have landed on a good number and broad range of funding sources. As we determine what the final funding mix will be, I hope we consider the range of needs that our sources meet. For example, the TBD is an obvious source to help fund the Grand Connection, but it may also be needed to fund other transportation priorities. This is really good work here. Again, I'm impressed with the vision that so many folks had to bring the Grand Connection to life. I think we're on the right track and I fully support moving forward with the alternate delivery application and taking the next steps to fund the project. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great presentation. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. And whenever Grand Connection comes up, I can't help but hear our former colleague in the background saying, go big or go home because I always felt like he said that when it came to the Grand Connection. So just to table set, as you said earlier before, I just want to understand, how does the Friends of the Grand Connection work with the Office of the Grand Connection? How does that relationship work? And then you'll understand why I'm asking that question with my next question after you answer that.
Do you want me to kick that off?
Sure.
All right. So the Friends play a really important role in complement to the city. They really are the external supporters and boosters of this project. It is not fully unlike the Friends of the Waterfront that was formed over in Seattle to really help support a lot of the both the philanthropic and fundraising components that help support the program as well as the ongoing maintenance and operations function. Once the crossing itself, of course, is a capital, you know, capital project that we'll have to design and construct and deliver, the corridor more broadly is a much bigger operation that in other cities really requires a long-term commitment to programming, activation, management, for it to really be successful in making sure people can fully take advantage of all the different transportation and other kinds of wayfinding and economic development opportunities that are there. And so that is a lot of the role that the Friends play is kind of that complement to the city that is more focused on a lot of the transactional components of how do we get the different developer agreements, parcel agreements, how do we design the thing, all of those different nuts and bolts? How do we finance it? How does the design intersect with our bike network, with the K-line? A lot of different operational aspects that the Friends are not directly involved in. But I would turn to any of my colleagues to add on or fix any of that description.
No, I think that was a great summary. I think I think the big theme is that they're the external supporters for the project. And I think a prime advocate external to the city. And we definitely see them in the future playing a larger role as well.
I'll just add that I have been really fortunate in my career to work on three very complicated, exciting public-private partnerships, being the Seattle Waterfront and working on the vision for South Lake Union after the second Commons vote failed and moving forward on development in that neighborhood. And also working on the Kent Station Project in Kent, that was a former chemical plant site next to the commuter rail station. And in all of those examples, it took leadership from the public sector and then some private boosters to make that project happen. And in all three examples, a lot of private development occurred because of that initial public sector investment.
That's helpful, thank you so much. So but I'm assuming that the Friends are obviously offering up suggestions and I'm assuming when it comes to the funding, they're offering up suggestions. And I would assume that their recommendation would be something along the lines of everything's on the table. So was, how did we come to this tier system? And John did a great job explaining with the mortgage analogy, I appreciate that. Because but the tier system seems to be, the way it's constructed right now, easiest path, least resistance, or as you said, what we control. However, in prior conversations, we have always said that a big part of this too is going to be the private-public partnerships. And Nathan, I'm so glad that you mentioned that in your introduction as well, having an expert expertise in that. So how did that get dropped to number two? And number one, we're looking at TIF, which I'm a big fan of, but then the TBD got pushed up there as well and which has led to a lot of consternation from from other folks and that we heard from tonight and will continue to. And I and I and I hope that, at least the conversations that I've had, is that not necessarily opposed to a TBD. However, I think residents and stakeholders just really want to hear very, very specific, if we go down this route, that they want to know exactly where it's going to and not just put into these large buckets of we're going to put it towards maintenance or we're going to put it towards a grand, but it's not specific enough. So so my my caution going forward, the more specific that we can be, and I understand where we are at this point, everything's on the table and we need to do more work on this, but my caution is, when it comes to that TBD, please be as specific as 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 possible. But I'll go back to my 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 prior question, John, it's just like how, so it was just set up path of least resistance in these three tiers, is that correct? And not necessarily, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember, while least resistance is part of this, so we have to demonstrate to the state in a very short order and be ready this year to put our first package together to engage with the state.
Okay.
That says we have the capacity to do this. Today, we do not have any letters of commitment or any grant letters that add to that. We have to demonstrate to the state that we have the capacity within our control. That being said, next year, as you begin the work for twenty-seven, twenty-eight and do the detailed work with us into building that stack, which will likely occur second quarter, early third quarter, that it's actually, excuse me, into first quarter, beginning of second quarter. That's where we will begin to get very specific about what, from where, and how much. And we are hoping that the fundraising and the additional efforts that are running in parallel with this process will be able to identify some opportunities by that point in time. So they can be first in position at that point, but we still have to get to the state and get through the state process that says we have the capacity, which is why it had to move to second tier, only for that state application process. But in our thinking, that's cash, that's your cash down payment.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And I think that's a really important distinction in terms of where we're at right now and why we have to take this approach right now. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're just leading with those with those two. So it makes perfect sense, thank you so much. Just a couple of the quick comments before I run out of time, or maybe I have already, but love the community programming fund, so that is so great to get people engaged already at this point and and these great program that offer that we're able to offer along the along what will be the Grand Connection. So it's fantastic to see that. And I think it's also important to always keep in mind too that this goes, yes, maybe falls under transportation, but this is a lot of different other things that, you know, this capsule, this is economic development, this is sustainability, this is tourism, this is a lot of different things. And it's it's very exciting in that in that total package and what it can bring to the city as well. But my other caution is that we have a lot of other needs, especially when it comes to transportation as 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 well. And as important and as much of a fan I am of this as well, I always think it's really important to keep in mind of all the other, I don't know, constraints or other needs throughout throughout the city as 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 we move along and that we keep that in mind as as we progress. But love the presentation, love the fact that we can keep moving this forward since two thousand and fourteen. So thanks so much for the update and look forward to the update in September as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sumadwarya.
Well, before I say the praise, I love this project, but I want to kind of piggyback with Councilmember Newenhouse, I had a question first. So with, I want to actually understand more about the process of doing the application with the state. Is it possible for you to like, like a short kind of rundown, what is the, you know, the, what does the process look like? And then even though, I might correct me if I'm wrong, we're not already committing one type of source funding tonight, right? We're not, okay, I just want to clarify that. Okay, so can you help me to understand, like, what is the application like? You know, what is the contingency we have to show, like something like that?
Yeah. And if that's a big answer, we could also take this offline and.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we could just give a brief overview real quick, so.
If you need more information, we'll take, we'll get you.
Yeah, so the the states, we are required to get approval from the state to use alternative delivery methods. Any jurisdiction in Washington State has to do that. And one of the things that we have to show is that the city has the financial capacity to deliver the project. And a big piece of that is is the capital stack. But it also goes into things like who is on the project team, what is the experience of the consultants who are on the design team? We're, you know, gathering documents at this stage showing kind of where the project has been and where it is going so that the state can see, oh, this is a real project, it is going to deliver. They seem to have the capacity to take on an alternative delivery model, which is tends to be a little bit more labor-intensive in some ways to the jurisdiction. And we are moving further ahead in some ways than a normal design bid-build project would go at this stage. Is that a good summary?
It's a wonderful summary. It has become a more frequently used tool. It is being used by lots of different sizes and types of municipalities and government agencies to deliver both transportation projects, other types of public works. It is something frankly that Bellevue is excited to start using as our growth and needs to build infrastructure to keep up with growth. This is a great tool because it helps us maintain more control over cost, scope, and delivery instead of the traditional design bid-build method, which is often the right choice in many, many circumstances. But it is really going to be something important for us to seek this approval and then learn how to deploy this when it is to the city's benefit.
That being said, not every project is approved. That's why it's so important that we're well-coordinated and have a very thorough application.
Great, thank you. And then so, for example, I guess there is very clear, I had honored to be working, be part of the Friends of Connection, so, you know, and with Visit Bellevue, the collaboration, I think this, I believe this project is not a just project. It's something that's going to connect in every department of the city together and every, I think every side of the city is going to combine together with this beautiful project that's going to showcase we are a global city, that's really care about every community member in the community that crossing from Downtown Park to the Crossroads Park. So I think I'm really excited about that. One thing that because we are so focused so much about the private and public sector, since we are thinking about funding, what happens to tier-one funding while we are pursuing this application? We do end up getting twenty-five million or fifteen million from the state or something magically happened, the federal dropped a billion dollars to us, who knows? But what happens to tier-one funding when those things, good things, magical things happens?
Councilmember, it's, there's a great process that we believe that the engagement we'll have with you on the specific tools. We also know that we're going to seek bond funding, so we've got the capacities probably in different tranches based off of the phases of delivery. So we'll have the ability to reduce the amount we go out and assume debt against as we're thinking about that process. So should we get something that comes in at year five that wasn't available and contemplated in the first, we can actually reduce how much debt we're seeking and be able to reduce that need. So we're really being very careful and thoughtful so that you see the full capacities and then are making very specific decisions. Again, along the way, you will have as a council that ability to direct and make sure that you're very comfortable with each step, both revenue as well as the bond funding.
Can I add something? I want to take advantage of that answer and your question to also recognize one exciting tiny update that we have had, I think actually since we even developed the materials. Because of your work and and Councilmember, perhaps, oh yeah, including your work, I was about to say timeline, we adopted back in late April or early May, a revised federal agenda with our federal priorities. The Grand Connection is included in there and we were really excited to find out last week that we have been successful at this point in the process in receiving from Representative Adam Smith, one of his congressional. uh, one of his congressionally, congressionally diverted spending marks for two million dollars for the Grand Connection. Um, there's a long road to go in federal appropriations and we had the same mark moving forward last year. Uh, and it went away when they did the continuing resolution. But I wanted to make that point for two reasons. One, to thank you who both adopted that agenda and who have been advocating in Washington DC and locally with our delegation to promote that. That we've been beating this drum for a little while and we're trying to get some, uh, kind of some toehold with the federal government. We're continuing to be eligible for bigger competitive federal grants, should they still be there. And so it is my, uh, the, but the other thing and the second reason I mentioned is, we're continuing to pursue all of these different sources. So all our eggs are not in those first couple of options. We're continuing to pursue all these different strategies in tier two so that we can really diminish, as John said, uh, our need to really take out, um, to utilize those city-owned, um, uh, revenue tools. So we're, we are hard at work to try to make sure we diversify this funding stack as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I promise this is really short, one last. Would we have any, um, grants for small business able to activate on the area near Grand Connection? You can just say yes or no, we can follow up too.
Right now, we are still planning on another round of community programming fund next year. So we'll share more information in time.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you, Councilmember Barga.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, great presentation, really appreciate it. Also want to extend warm welcome to you, Nathan, this is day seventeen and incredible things already happening. So congratulations, also great to have fantastic experience like you bring, uh, for this project in the Office of Grand Connection. So that's really great. I also think the Grand Connection, I just want to start by saying, is truly like a visionary project that Bellevue has taken on. It's got so many things that have been said already, uh, within the presentation and, uh, by my peers already, but this is truly great. It, it will put Bellevue even more on the map than, uh, you know, we can imagine, this is really awesome. Creates opportunities for not just connectivity, pedestrian bike, creates opportunities for economic growth. But I think it also creates opportunities for economic resiliency, which is really, really important. Uh, I also really appreciate the push that you've already taken for alternative delivery methods. I think it creates, given the scale and complexity of the project, the need for flexibility and the volatility you have for funding sources, that I think is the right decision. And I really applaud you on the work that's already done so far, and I think you're on the right path, uh, great choice. I do want to say that fiscal responsibility and transparency is a cornerstone of how we want to operate. I think it's really important that we maintain the transparency on the funding and where the money is going and monitor it, do it really carefully and make sure that we're uncovering all the stones that we need to, to minimize any impacts to our residents that we can. I also think it's really important that we clarify right now, uh, that what you're, and this was actually brought forward in the discussion that's already happened, is that what you're putting out are funding strategies. The tiering can change, the approach can change, and there is no real trade-off. Because that actually came out in some commentary that it's a trade-off between funding this versus that. It's, it's really a, a menu of strategies that will come to life as we learn more and that trade-off isn't really real. And, uh, I appreciate that, I appreciate the flexibility this offers and the approach you're taking, and I'm supportive, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to ask a question first. Why, why are we paying so much attention to the state? Because they give us tax incremental financing, which is about, what, fifty to hundred million dollars? I mean, we have a lot of ways to fund this project, so why are we slave to the state?
Um, one of the key reasons is actually the legal authority to pursue alternative delivery. State law requires us to go through a state commission and state process that is dictated through RCW. And we have to be able to meet that threshold to be allowed to utilize an alternative delivery method. So it is critical that we pay attention to RCW and the requirements in order to meet that threshold.
What does it mean? I don't understand that.
So.
What's the delivery?
It allows us again to use something other than designed bid build, which has a singular path and has some variables within it. Alternative delivery allows us to do more of a, um, design build and bring our, our designer and our, uh, construction partner to the table together. And the state law provides limitations and authority to, to grant us as a jurisdiction to do those things.
So we spent most of our time talking about financing. So you are not really talking about financing, you're talking about the delivery method.
But the delivery method required.
Nothing with financial, nothing with money.
The delivery method in state law requires us to bring the financing plan as well as part of that application.
So why do we have to focus on TIF? Why is the state involved? It's our ability to finance it, the city of Bellevue. We have many ways to finance it, that's what we, I appreciate you made a real good presentation, giving us a real good, uh, clear, you know, list of how we can finance this. TIF is only one method, we got all others, but so why are we hung up on the TIF? Why do we have to go to the state? That's my question. We can present the state with all the various ways of financing.
Councilmember, you as a body always have the ability to choose not to utilize that funding source. But given your direction and policy on growth paying for growth, tax increment financing becomes one of the cleanest tools for meeting your policy objectives.
Yeah, uh, we have, we, we didn't have TIF before, it's only enacted a few years ago, right? So before that, we have other ways to finance and we've done a lot of great things to Bellevue. And we're still moving forward. That's why I'm, I don't want to be, us to be hung up. And as we can see, our discussion now is focusing on TIF, right? On the question that's asked. Uh, that's why there's controversy, because we're thinking, TIF really could be used for transportation. And so by doing this, we're debating, should we prioritize it? If we have control over all the means of financing, we, City Council on behalf of the, the public can decide what means we use to finance what projects. We decide on the priorities, right? And that's what we have to, that's what we're doing, that's what we're asked to do. So because it's generating these kind of question, that's kind of diverting us from the real issue about how do we pay for this. I support the Grand Connection hundred percent because Wilberton is the project that actually connects Downtown Bellevue to the rest of the Bellevue. That's why the Belray Corridor, it's a, that's a great project. The city has a vision for the last twenty years and we have Bellevue, Belray Corridor is developing, it's happening. And, but Wilberton is still not doing anything. We cannot cross Downtown, the four oh five to Wilberton. Now we have a plan that's going to happen. We are very fortunate, we have a private partnership, specifically, I don't mind naming names. Amazon is what he's, hey, we can give money to help you. And there are other partnerships, like developers on the Wilberton area, in Bellevue Downtown, in Belray Corridor, who, people who are interested in the overall Bellevue development, we are willing to support it. So TIF is just only one way to do it, but there are many, many other ways.
Correct.
So don't try to limit ourselves, right? And if, if TIF is better tool to provide transportation, we should use that for transportation, right? And we have other, we have other ways to develop Grand Connect, Grand Connection. I think that's really how we should be looking at it, how we should be approaching this. And I think we're willing to do that, we're willing to talk about it. Here we're talking about many ways to skin the cat. So why don't we, so I appreciate the list you have. So our job, I believe, is to look at the whole list.
Correct.
To see what list we should be using. So this tier one, tier two, tier three, to me, it's really not that meaningful. We, the council has to decide what is tier one, tier two, tier three. Because we have to pair the, the, the project with what priority, to what money we have available to make it happen. So without restriction, but the way we're discussing it, that's kind of really making challenge in tying our hands. You are dividing the public with the council, with other people, because we're giving, you have no choice, you gotta do this. We have choices.
You, Councilmember.
The council's job is to decide how we should prioritize. I put, yeah, that's why we need to decide.
We fully agree with you.
Should we have TIF money, transportation benefit district money? Because that to most people is for transportation purposes.
And transportation benefit district and transp- the tax increment financing are two of the tools and you will be the ones who determine which tool is used.
Yes.
Our job tonight was to bring forward tools that you've asked us to look at.
Yes.
Here's the full menu and that's where we're at tonight and we fully agree that you will be making those decisions.
Thank you, I, I appreciate this clarification. And as I mentioned again, I'm fully supportive of Grand Connection, we'll make sure it happens, okay? But they are also, you know, the right tool, the right partner money could be used on other projects that for us may also have priorities, may have priorities in some other ways, right? We could do both at the same time, if we want to. With bank capacity, we didn't even talk about bank capacity. Bellevue has been so physically responsible, we've always kept our tax to a minimum. So we have bank capacity of how much?
Approximately seven million.
Seven million dollar a year, so that's quite a bit chunk of money we can use, you know? And that could, money could be used for many other purposes as well. And you could go to Grand Connection as well. Or if we prefer, we can make, go to housing, we can go to transportation, we could go to other economic development as well.
Correct.
But we need to talk about all that stuff, but we don't. We just talk about one little bit and we're missing a lot of other pictures. So how can we make good decisions without knowing what is at our disposal and what's the best way to bet it? Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor. Uh, thank you, all of you, Anthony, John, Genesi, and welcome, Nathan. Uh, we are all very pleased with the presentation, uh, love the Office of the Grand Connection. Uh, that's a great idea, uh, thanks Transportation Department. Uh, all of the detail that you guys provided, it's so good to see, uh, a long-term council vision become something more tangible every time that you present. Of course, uh, thanks friend of Grand Connection for their, um, ongoing support. Uh, this, uh, and I also appreciate the integration of placemaking, a launch of inclusive engagement tools. They are all excellent steps to this vision become a reality. Uh, we've heard about the food analogy and I love food. Uh, they said this is, the, the, the comment was, um, the road part of transportation is the main food and this is a dessert, uh, the, the Grand Connection. I think, uh, as a full food, we have fat, fiber, and, uh, protein. And I think the road is protein, but we need fat and fiber. And I think this kind of transportation and different model of transportation is essential for our transportation network. I don't see it as a dessert part of the cherry on top of the food, I think is the main component of the food. I think the success of Grand Connection is very important that we are collaborating with a lot of, um, part, uh, partner. Uh, I am very happy that you are partnering with all of this private development that is near the, uh, Grand Connection, also to, uh, city, uh, kind of parts that, uh, we need to really coordinate, uh, this integration with the surrounding development. And I'm very pleased that you guys are doing that. Also, I'm very pleased to see all of the coordination that you are doing with all of other agencies. Uh, you talk about that, that's also very nice to hear. One question, I know the, I know we started with a very expensive vision and then we trimmed it down to now one hundred fifty, two hundred. Uh, but we are dealing with the rising construction costs affecting all of the project. Do we have a value engineering framework in place? Uh, if budget pressure increase, how will we determine from now this trimmed version, which elements of the crossing or corridor could be scaled back of while we preserve the core goals of the project?
Great question, I think that's one of the reasons why we're pursuing the GCCM is to bring both of those parties together, that will help, uh, with risk management. Um, so I think that's a key component. Uh, if costs continue to escalate, uh, we will have to take another look at the actual cost and the engineering of the crossing over four oh five.
One, I, I do want to chime in here and just give a quick example of something where GCCM is beneficial to us. Um, as part of that process, we are bringing on a general contractor earlier than we ordinarily would. So we will be able to work with the general, or the designer, we'll be able to work with, uh, the general contractor to say, hey, if you put the crossing ten feet to the, to the north, for example, you will be able to have a second crane and that's going to result in you being able to have smaller cranes and thus a lower cost, uh, in terms of constructability. So it's taking a really deep dive on constructability, um, is going to be one driver of reducing those costs.
Uh, thank you, good, please.
I'm so sorry, Deputy Mayor, I just wanted to add that our primary design consultant, WSP, uh, actually hired on as a subconsultant, a, uh, a firm of contractors uh, to really, um, not assume, but work with them directly to say, okay, what is a mid, low, and high range for the actual construction costs that you're seeing in the projects you're working on? They've folded, have been, they folded that into both the visionary design that we completed in December and they continue to be, uh, an asset that we're using to make sure that we are not, uh, making, uh, very optimistic assumptions about costs, but really tru-, you know, baselining them to the costs we're seeing in real time. So I just want to let you know that's been important.
No, that's very helpful. Uh, I think my last comment is, and I think basically a majority of the council talks about that. Uh, when the project started, I also, uh, understood that the funding model is going to be a balance of the city funds, one third, the state and federal contribution, one third, and then private philanthropic support. And I know now the, uh, funding source is shifting. And I think everyone, uh, on the dais mentioned that now we need to have a balance, uh, that you guys are doing the cost of this project with all of our future financial obligation that we have in other areas, not just Grand Connection. My only question is, you mentioned that you are doing this, this first step because you have a deadline with the state. Why you are not using this deadline to get those letters on the tier two right now? Are you thinking about that?
Councilmember, we are thinking about that and we are actively engaged with the friends on getting to that step and engaging in what philanthropy opportunities are there and what corporate philanthropy opportunities. Um, they are very tightly tied into the process and understand the timelines. And I'm certain that behind me, they're thinking about the timing of when it would be appropriate to have letters of commitment to help with that process and giving them the space to also do that. So they're very much tied into our process.
So yeah, if, so if we get those letters, then if we get all of those beautiful letters, you may can change those tiers and.
You will see what, what is on the table at the time and there will be additional pushes through that timeframe before we get to decisions on increasing taxes of any sort. You're going to want to see all of that.
And then lastly, it's going to be, I know you talked about next step, um, in the next slide, but it's going to be a clear gating checkpoints, uh, before we commit the city to any long-term obligations. Is that correct?
Yes, I'll, I'll turn to John here in a moment. There will be a number of different, uh, we, we have referred to it on the staff team as a go in, in many different, uh, steps, many different stages. And so we will continue to come back here for different permissions to move, keep moving ahead with TIF two, once we receive that approval from the State Committee in September, to go ahead and, uh, oh. in September, to go ahead and, uh, oh, advertise and then award pre-construction contracts. So we're gonna have that contractor and final design consultant together at one table to really design those costs to our schedule and our budget. Um, and then there will be more as we turn into 2026, when we really talk about the financing.
In addition to the specific fund, there's also the, um, question of seeking debt, and so going out for bonds. But additionally, in the GCCM process, there are specific points in time that allow for off-ramps, so that we all have legal protection and our contracting partners, uh, the general contractor and the designer are also protected as well. So we all can take that step, and we've got those off-ramps built into the process. So there's a number of places along the way where we will also detail out that out through our process, so you can see where those off-ramp points are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, some of these you can answer in an email if you prefer. Um, I'm curious, when we start trying to decide what type of funding options we're going to decide on, how are we going to engage the public on that? Because obviously it impacts them.
We will definitely have to do that, and we would not come to you, uh, to talk about specific funding without engaging with them. So as we engage with you about specific funding, we'll also be doing that parallel work. There will be other folks who will get involved to help us align that. And I'm gonna take a half step back because I can help you on the funding, but the public engagement, we're gonna, we've got some great professionals who can help in that space.
I mean, I don't see a levy as an option here. Couldn't we do some kind of a levy and to raise money for something like that?
Um, Mayor, that is not off the table at all, but for the purposes of, of the GCCM, the, to get that approval from the state.
Yeah.
It's the most immediate. There are options where we could utilize a longer path, um, and make that decision to do that based off of where we need the funding and where the tranches are and where the off-ramps are to make sure that we've got the right resources to be able to issue bonds.
Okay, that sounds good. And then if we were to go with a TIF, how do you anticipate you're going to engage with the partners?
Oh, wonderful question. Uh, so, uh, as you know, Mayor, because I know that you worked to help, uh, in the final stages of the session, help advocate for why this was important for the state to help, um, give us this financing tool. Uh, because it had, uh, the fine print and the, particularly the time constraint associated with it, uh, when we got a little bit past the session, we reached out first and formally to the other taxing jurisdictions to say, we think we probably may, might want to utilize this. Uh, we need to talk with our city council. But this is something that is consistent with our financial policies as a growth pays for growth concept as part of our funding stack. Um, now, after this conversation this evening, we go back to those funding, uh, excuse me, to those taxing districts, and we say more officially, all right, we would like to really bring you our analysis and hear from you about, uh, what you're looking for in our, uh, vision for the Grand Connection, and we seek your partnership and participation in TIF. That will happen, that will have its own process, which is really, uh, quite enumerated in state law also, uh, because it starts with the taxing districts while we gather the, uh, financial analysis that is currently underway. And then, we then turn to the Office of the State Treasurer to do some independent analysis, uh, as well. And so there are several different steps in that process, but after the conclusion of this conversation tonight, we go to the county, the port, and Sound Transit, uh, and the additional subdivisions of King County, and we say, we want to talk to you about this project, our vision for it, why it's important in Bellevue, why we think that you have a shared interest in it, and we want to hear your interests as well. So that'll be something that we do. We believe that on balance, uh, this will have a neutral or positive impact for the other taxing districts, but we can't assert that without data. We have to really show the analysis, um, to be able to, um, let them review that, uh, inside their own governments as well. But that is our immediate next step.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, you can do the next one on email. I'm just asking what the difference is between the TIF that's being proposed as a potential funding source and the TFIYA that we used in, uh, Belred. So I know one's federal, one's state, but a little more detail on the impact to the community. Um, so, this is my big moment to talk about my concern of bikes. So we're, we're planning to build this dedicated pedbike path route over the four oh five, and yet, when we get across, we don't have any place for the bikes to go, because we know that we don't want them continuing on down Sixth Street on the Grand Connection. And we also know that anybody who's coming on their bikes is gonna have a place to go downtown. So I think it's really important that, in tandem with these discussions, we start thinking about how do we get the infrastructure in our downtown to support bikes, scooters, that want to go from point A to point B. And, um, you know, whether that's dedicated bike lanes, or it's just green paint and shared lanes, I just need to, I need us to have a plan, because I think it would be really irresponsible of us to build this and not have a place, a safe place for bikes and scooters to go after that. Because I think a lot of people don't realize that it stops there, the infrastructure for the bikes. Um, and then the last thing is, I love the Community Programming Fund. It's wonderful. I feel like if you have it on our website as a community programming event, nobody is going to know what that is. So can we have an, an events calendar, uh, where all those community programmed events are included? Because I'm so bummed that I missed the swing dancing. I didn't know.
So that is something that we're working on. We also, uh, are, uh, working with some partner organizations that have actually recently rolled out calendars of their own that are very similar, that we are going to be working with them to get our, uh, CPF-funded programs into their calendars. So Belred Arts District recently launched a calendar. Visit Bellevue has one that they've, uh, been kind of getting, kind of revamped a little bit. Uh, but yes, that is, that is something that is on our list.
Okay, so I'd love to go to the City of Bellevue website, go to Calendar of Events, and you can send me to another site if you like, but I'd like to be able to get there from our city website.
I have another tool for you that we'll share with you.
Okay. Sounds, is it like pa-, is it manual?
No.
Okay.
It's online.
All right. Thank you very much. Any more, yeah, any more comments or questions?
My question, follow up with, and a mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm interested about this, uh, community programming. Uh, it should be a community program everywhere in Bellevue. Why is it specific to Grand Connection?
It actually is not specific to Grand Connection. So, uh, a good chunk of, uh, the funding is actually going outside of the Grand Connection corridor. Um, we, this year allocated about fifty thousand dollars, uh, outside of downtown. It's likely to be more than that when all is said and done, uh, because, of course, when you give grants to organizations, not all of the programs end up happening, they end up moving locations. Uh, we're probably gonna be at about fifty fifty with programs that are downtown versus in the rest of the city.
Okay. Can you wait, can you please make a motion?
One more.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is, uh, promised very, very quick. Um, so, can we see a slide that looks like tier one, tier two, tier three, and it enumerates things underneath them? A lot of the discussion we talked about is, this is for now, that is flexibility. I just want to confirm, uh, two little things. These are yes, no questions. The current approach that we've laid down as tier one, tier two, tier three sources of funding does not create a mental model that prevents us from moving away from that in the future.
Correct.
Yes, it does not.
It does not.
Okay. And the second thing, it does not preclude us from also using these sources of funding for multiple things depending on the priorities if needed. Yes?
Correct, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, let's hear the motion.
I move to direct, I move to direct staff to move forward with the process for state approval of alternative delivery design and construction method of project delivery, and with the step necessary to prepare to fund the next phase of the Grand Connection program.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We're gonna take a break until, uh, twenty two. Thank you. Hey, welcome back. So we're on our second study session item. The city manager, if you could please introduce this for us. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. So this study session is to review a recommended code update to, um, align our e-scooter regulations with state law in some of our neighboring cities. Um, it should promote public safety and also address community needs. It also paves the way for potential future shared micromobility, uh, program permit. So we have from our Transportation Department, Director Andrew Singleakis, Molly Johnson, Assistant Director, and Franz Lowenhurst, Mobility and Planning Solutions Manager. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Andrew to introduce the topic.
Okay, well, thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Melakutian, and Council. Uh, the purpose of the study session is to give you information about a motorized foot scooter ordinance that, with your concurrence, we'd like to bring back to the council, uh, on consent. Uh, the original ordinance was adopted back in two thousand and seven, when motorized, uh, scooters were completely different than what they are today. Uh, that landscape has changed almost completely. Um, the changes we are seeking are primarily to be consistent with state law, and, um, I would like your thoughts about next steps, particularly the establishment of a shared scooter program, similar to the Bike Share Program that we launched a few years back. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Franz, for the presentation.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Uh, tonight's, uh, presentation considers why, uh, this code amendment, uh, is being proposed, how this supports our comprehensive plan, the engagement process we worked through to arrive at tonight's recommendation, the component elements of the code amendment, what we anticipate as next steps following council direction, and finally, uh, the direction that, that Andrew spoke to of, uh, seeking concurrence on bringing this back, the ordinance back for adoption via consent agenda. As Andrew mentioned, uh, Bellevue City Code eleven forty-eight to ten, uh, was adopted in two thousand and seven. At the time, this was in response to community concerns surrounding gas-powered motorized foot scooters. Um, this eighteen-year-old code, uh, now represents a number of challenges for us. Notably, um, they, uh, it represents, uh, legal limitations on where scooters can operate in the city. Uh, it is misaligned with state law and, uh, regional, um, practices, and it, it doesn't account for the rapidly evolving mobility landscape, which, uh, has seen a significant uptick in the number of e-scooters, electric scooters that are prevalent on city streets today. This compre-, uh, this, um, code amendment is supportive of Bellevue Comprehensive Plan Policies TR thirteen, which encourages us to evaluate and facilitate micromobility sharing programs, and TR thirty-one, uh, encouraging us to monitor and implement as appropriate emerging, uh, mobility technologies. Uh, we went through, uh, a process of engagement with touchpoints with council, the Transportation Commission, city staff, and, uh, the community. Back in February, we presented council with a management brief. March to May, we worked with the commission through, uh, multiple consultations where they informed the themes that guided our amend, proposed amendments to the city code. Uh, we launched a public-facing webpage, and we also engaged in consultations with other departments. Uh, at their May meeting, the Transportation Commission confirmed, uh, the code amendment, um, direction that we're presenting to you this evening. Tonight, we are reviewing this with you and, and seeking your concurrence to return, uh, at this time scheduled for August fourth, uh, as a consent agenda item for adoption of the ordinance. The Transportation Commission's, uh, recommendations on this code amendment are reflected in Attachment A of your agenda memo, clarify where scooters, uh, would be allowed to operate. Uh, this includes on roadways, on bike lanes, or in bike lanes, uh, on paved trails, in shared-use paths, and in city parks, uh, except where signed as prohibited. Uh, the, uh, commission further recommended that these not be allowed, uh, to operate on unpaved gravel trails, nor on sidewalks unless there is no safe alternative. In response to community input, the commission, uh, authorize, uh, recommends authorizing the city traffic engineer to create dismount zones where needed. And then there are a whole host of other provisions identified in the, uh, rules of operation that, uh, are intended to safeguard, safeguard people walking in a number of different ways. At its May meeting, the Transportation Commission, uh, recommended that the helmet requirement be removed. Uh, staff fully intends to continue to encourage helmet usage via its, uh, communication strategies. Um, and finally, the three elements, uh, on this slide, speed limit, age requirement, and hours of operation, the commission recommended that these mirror the state, uh, law. Throughout this consultative process, there was, uh, significant interest and, and stakeholder letters were submitted. Uh, Attachment B reflects, uh, combination, uh, compilation of those, as well as the new letters that you've received in recent days, uh, in your desk packet. Uh, collectively, these letters reflect support for the code amendment language and express interest that staff, uh, progress on to advancing a shared micromobility program that includes both e-scooters and, uh, e-bikes. Uh, reflected on this slide are some of the next steps elements staff, uh, proposed to engage in, uh, in terms of program elements and issues, uh, related to this potential shared program permit, uh, pending council adoption of the city code. And that concludes staff's presentation. Uh, as, as Andrew mentioned at the onset, we're seeking your direction to bring the ordinance forward for final action as part of a future consent agenda, and we also would welcome your input on the potential shared micromobility program.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Noonhouse, you want to start us off?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'll try and keep my comments brief, as Conrad has challenged all of his colleagues here to keep comments under two minutes. So I'm gonna try and do that, uh, going forward. Um, so, uh, great presentation, fully supportive of getting in line, um, with, with, with the state, uh, and also, um, by adopting the, the BCCA ordinance. Just a couple of, uh, uh, quick questions. Um, number one, how quickly can we get a pilot launched for scooters, and what is the ideal timing of that? I, because I would think that we would have less data if we launched it during the winter, for example. So, um, what, what are your thoughts on that?
We were thinking that it'd probably be around, uh, springtime next year, and, uh, there's a lot of work that we need to do in order to coordinate with other departments that have an interest in this. Uh, Police Department, FAM, is another one, uh, the City Attorney's Office, and Parks, and then also getting into negotiations with whoever would be the provider for that to make sure that bicycle, I mean, that the scooters are taken back at night, um, a variety of issues that need to occur. So if things go well, we think that we could get there by spring.
Okay. Um, and I would just really encourage dusting off the old pilot that we did with the Bike Share, which I thought was a great pilot. We got great data, had great metrics. And Franz, I think you led the, the effort on that. Um, and, and I also recall, and I'm hearing some of the same themes around scooters as we did around bikes. A lot of them just didn't come to fruition, uh, such things as, you know, people concerned about where the bikes would be left, um, concerned about bikes blocking entryways to businesses or retail or, or what, what have you. That was fairly limited. Um, and, um, from what I can recall, the, the, the vendor, um, which I believe was Lime at the time, um, I don't think there was any other vendor who took part in that pilot, but, um, were very responsive, collected it. And, uh, I, I think we should have those same kind of parameters listed there for the pilot. You're probably already thinking about this, but in terms of where you can park a scooter. You're probably already thinking about this, but in terms of where you can park a scooter, where those dismount zones are, where, you know, just very specific, so that those 80,000 folks that opened up the app that were looking for a scooter to know exactly how to operate it here in the city of Bellevue. So that's, I just wanted to encourage that. And also, as the chair, to the liaison, to the Transportation Commission, I thought the Commission did a great job aligning this code with the state in terms of the speed limit, in terms of the helmet, et cetera. One last question is, if I looked at the components here, when we talk about riding, let me just get the right language here, but riding on sidewalks is not allowed unless there is no safe alternative. Who's determining no safe alternative? Because I can envision if someone's new to a scooter, you know, they might not think it's ever safe to be out on the roadway or in a designated bike lane, and they would always prefer to be on the sidewalk. So who determines that? And also, what are the consequences if someone does ride it on the sidewalk when there are other alternatives or the main, the main alternative is being ignored because they'd rather be on the sidewalk? And that goes for any of these things, be it gravel or what have you. What are the consequences to that? Or are there?
Sure. So page one of Attachment A has, Section B, C has the specific language on what constitute unsafe. So if there's no safe alternative, such as a bicycle lane or where the posted speed limit is 20 miles per hour, that's what constitutes that clause. You know, there would clearly need to be an outreach campaign to help educate people. In terms of penalties, this is on page three of the draft code language. Violation of any provision of this chapter is a traffic infraction punishable by the imposition of a monetary penalty of not more than $250. And then it goes on. So it, my suspicion is, as is the case with other enforcement activities in this realm, there would be an effort to try and encourage versus enforce at the onset to really provide information so people know what the expectations are.
Great, thank you. And thank you for going through that for folks that are listening tonight that might have thought about that. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Councilmember Bargatva.
Okay, thank you. I want to start by saying that I'm not only supportive, but I'm excited by the opportunity. This is great. I think we're going to create opportunities for micro-mobility, create opportunities for different kinds of modes of transportation, transit connectivity. I think it's an exciting opportunity. I would also like to see the control pilot come quickly and be sure that we have well-defined safety criteria, fleet size, usage and adoption metrics, parking requirements, and of course, sharing of data and performance metrics very clearly. I think that's really important. I'll also lay out just a few thoughts. I think some of them might be redundant because I wasn't here for the prior pilot or the results, but safety standards become really, really important as you think through them. I think you already have mandates for helmets, age requirements, single rider usership is really important to enforce because you create secondary safety issues if that's not thoughtfully done. But they need to be part of this. I think also some other suggestions on geofencing, potentially prohibited zones, and that can be done through the app. I think that's an opportunity there. I'm sure that's something that is already on the table, but when we think about the pilot, we should try to incorporate that. And we have, I know you have speed limit controls in place, which I think is helpful. I'm not going to go too deep into the parking because I think that's probably well-established, but I do want to make sure that we have response time commitments, the service levels required from the operators, Lime, for example, to make sure that it's quick and it's not going to impact the, you know, look, feel, operations of our different modes of, you know, pedestrian, vehicle transportation. I think that's really important. And I think you talked about enforcement mechanisms and fines, which I think is great. I'll talk about two other considerations which are not maybe as common in terms of the discussion. I want to talk about equity and accessibility in your, just insert that in your thinking, ensuring that we have the ability for diverse user groups, whether it's, you know, payment methodologies and not just very restrictive ones, that not everybody has access to the same payment tools. So you've got to think about that potentially and maybe even consider low-income discounts. You know, how you establish that might be part of this, and multi-language support, which I don't know if that already exists, but I think we should think about that. And then, you know, obviously, the last mile effectiveness for transit connectivity and how we can enhance that. I think that would be also part of what I think is an equity question for me, at least when I thought about it. And the last piece is really community engagement and education, which I think you're already, based on your previous response, collection of data and make sure that there are great, you know, inputs for complaints, resolution of issues. And then, you know, that's really important because I think that's what's going to build trust in this process and refine also how we think about policy and guidelines as this scales. Because if we don't do that early, then we're going to create opportunities where people don't understand the intent or people don't think this is going to work, and that's rifts. We don't want to do that. Earlier, we address that and get deep into it, I think the better it is for us in terms of scalability of outcomes. And so I think, last comment for me is really, I think this does strike the balance that we want, unlocks mobility benefits, improves transit connectivity. I think this is a great opportunity, but thoughtful implementation for these micro-mobility options is really, really important. Because I think it's not just connectivity, it's also economic vitality that creates, this creates in different parts of the city, so fully supportive.
Great. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andrew, Molly, Franz. I have been waiting to see you in person for a long time, for the last two years. I'm happy that you're eventually here. Thank you so much for all of the work you have been doing for the Transportation Department. Thank you, Transportation Commission, the liaison, Councilmember Noonhouse. Thank you, and thankful for a very good ordinance update. It is clear that you guys did a great job, listened to the community input, studied the best practice, and aligned with the state's law and framework. I think everything has been mentioned. The only thing I'm going to add is now the targeting new 16-plus riders. I think we have a good opportunity to do some partnership with the schools, high schools, and do some safety workshop as part of the campaign for safe rides. If we can do some gamified rewards for safe behavior, helmet use, or proper parking. And I am guilty, I use Lime and kind of a scooter in South Lake Union all the time, and I'm not using, doing any of this, by the way. So I am preaching something that I should follow myself. And any basic safety education to offset the helmets requirements removal, I think, would be something that I recommend we should do. Thank you so much, Mayor. And I'm the only one under two minutes, by the way, to this moment.
Okay, all right. Set the bar there. So I'm going to preface this by saying I too am a scooter rider in Seattle, and I really appreciate when I need to go from point A to point B, and I've taken the bus, and I need to get there within 10 minutes as opposed to waiting for a bus, which might take over half an hour. It's really helpful. But it's only helpful to me and fun when I have, when I feel safe doing it, and I only feel safe if I have infrastructure protecting me. So again, I really want to make sure that we have the infrastructure to support this. And, you know, I mean, as this code is written, you've got, you could have people going down Bell Red Road in the middle of the lane on a scooter, pretty slow. And you could have people all over the place in Bellevue where I'm not sure it's really safe for them to be. So rather than saying they can't be there, why don't we put some infrastructure in and make it safe for them? So I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. City Manager, you and I have talked a lot about electric bikes. I think it's really imperative that we do an electric bike code concurrently with this. So I know we can't do it tonight and talk about it tonight and bring it forward for consent, but before we start a pilot project, can we have an EV, electric bike code as well that we discuss? And then I'm curious to learn more about, like, the electronic, like, what is the goal for the path that we want scooters to be taking? What is the point A, B, C, D, where we want them going? And where are we going to not permit them to be? Because I know you can have an electronic map where the scooter shuts off when you go outside the range. So I'd be curious to know more about that, if anybody can talk about that. And then I would definitely like to get signs in the park. Really would hate to see, I've already seen it, scooters on downtown park going, circle around the gravel, bikes as well as scooters. So if we could get some signage in there, that would be great.
The infrastructure, it is a work in progress, and I think that we've made a lot of progress recently with the raised intersections that we have right in front of the Transit Center, the new multi-use path that's going to be to the north of the Transit Center, work we're doing on Main Street, 108th as well as being a good corridor. So we are incrementally getting there and getting the infrastructure in place that would be necessary. What was the other part of your question?
Well, I mean, the electronic mapping, but I really am curious, I mean, do we have a picture in mind of where we're prioritizing that we want people to be riding? I assume it starts at Light Rail Station?
Absolutely.
And so where do you want them to be able to go from there? Because today, if I'm on a scooter at the Light Rail Station, there's no bike infrastructure right outside of the Light Rail Station.
Again, it's work in progress where we're making incremental changes that would support the bike infrastructure. And Franz, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I was just going to add that one of the exciting opportunities of a shared program is the data that we will generate and benefit from. We will understand what those desire lines are from the people using these devices, and that can also play into our prioritization. Given limited funds available, we need to be really judicious in how to allocate those resources. So having this additional data point that shows where these users are going A to B can become part of that game plan of how we prioritize our funding.
Okay, well, that's a little scary to me, to be honest with you. And I realize that dedicated bike lanes are really expensive, but can we at least paint some lanes that show that we're sharing a car lane with another device, a bike or a scooter, so that cars are aware that they need to be looking for them?
At this point in time, we, this year, we are anticipating about three miles of bike infrastructure, next year about 10 miles of infrastructure. There's a lot of shared lane markings associated with that, so that does speak to what you were requesting.
So are those three miles prioritized where the scooters and e-bikes are going to be on this pilot program?
They're wide, scooter use will be ubiquitous in the city, so it will be not confined to a specific designated area. So will these facilities benefit the users? Yes.
Okay. I can't say that I feel really great about these answers. I really, and I know you can't give me an answer, but what I'd love to hear is, we know they'll be starting at Light Rail, so we're going to focus on starting infrastructure at our Light Rail stations and getting them at least to an existing ped bike lane that we already have or something like that, some connections. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love options. This is another option, e-scooter. And I'd love to see Franz here. You know, he's an innovator of options, alternative transportation systems, so I'm glad that you're behind this as well. The one question I have is, in implementing the pilot program, you know, you, I believe that Bellevue is different from, or any city is different from any other cities. It's got its own particular people, right? The folks, different, different age, different, and we have different physical layouts. And so in order to know what's the best suitable for the city, you really need to test it out, right? You've got to see what's going to happen. So I think pilot is the way to do it. So my thought is that instead of waiting for, say, well, that's the best way and sort of prescribe it, the best way to do that is really try it, have a pilot program. So I would recommend, the sooner you get a pilot going, the sooner you have the real try and test, the sooner you know what is the best way, best codes to set, best requirement to have, you know, to fit the demographics, to fit the profile, you know, I mean, also the condition we have in the city. That's the best we have. So I hope that we will consider that, incorporate, and work with the Lime provider so that they would also learn it, so they would also, you know, be prepared to do those things. So other than that, I think that the Mayor asked a few things about what other things we could, we could do to help make it work better. I know that the city has been working on the curb side management, and maybe that's one of the things that we consider as to how to make it work, you know, for options like this. So I just wonder how, where are we in the curb management project? And whether that would help us and whether that could continue to improve, you know, the scooter, the micro-mobility program? And I believe that if we do pilot, if we get data, and most importantly, we can educate, you know, then I think we can have much sooner and better success. So this is what I'm thinking about. But I have one last question. When you have prescribed 15 miles per hour universal speed limit, how do you enforce it? Thank you.
So definitely a big part of pulling on this action, that if that does occur, then we would embark on a pretty significant education campaign. That would be priority number one. We will start to develop content, get that word out so that people are aware of the expectations and the rules of conduct, so that, you know, we have a harmonious Bellevue where people are looking out for each other. So that education will be a big part of it. We are working with police at this time in determining what the enforcement strategy is, but we don't have the details to share with you that this evening.
Isn't there kind of a limit on how fast the bike or scooter goes, though? I mean, that's the good news.
That's true for the shared scooters, but for the personal scooters, there are scooters that can operate significantly faster than 15 miles per hour.
Okay, good clarification. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sumidwaria.
I did not know that. Thank you for doing that. I didn't know there's a speed. So since between the scooter, I want to, also, I was really excited to try something called the glider. For somebody who's not as active as Deputy Mayor or as brave as everybody else running bikes or scooters, the glider was the perfect vessel for me. Is that would be possible added into a code? Because I think that could be reached, the demographic may be not like physically mobile or accessible for certain, yeah?
That would be, yes.
Okay, perfect. And then I think that one, my other question is, you know, because FIFA is coming pretty soon, and I can see this program could be a gateway to attract extra income for street-level small businesses usually cannot be maybe easily found by driving a car or like other activities, other, I think, transportation means. Is there any way that we can activate this? And then is there any way we can accelerate the timeline for pilot program? So one, it could give us more data earlier on so we can collect more to the safety issue, and then we can get some feedback. Second, maybe we can also work into a way where we can incentivize people use the rental scooter so they can explore more part of our Bellevue, so we can like engage with the placemaking effort so they can... placemaking effort, so they can explore our beautiful city. Is that a possibility for doing that?
I really think, looking at all the different stakeholders that we have to work with, especially internally, really don't, can't commit to anything that would be before the spring. But after that occurs, we will be collecting the data for it, understanding it, and then also working with the provider as well to try to figure out some of the issues that have been raised here tonight.
Okay, so it's like a true collaboration to move forward then?
Yes.
Thank you. One other question I had was, because we are going to be requiring permitting requirement and management for this new program, do you think that would be a possibility? We can use that money we collect on the permit to implement more innovative, like safety or science, could we? I don't know how that works, I want to check with you if it's possible. So it's kind of limit, like, it's not adding burden to our city responsibility?
I mean, we could look at that when we get into the negotiations over the contract of the RFP, or the contract that we enter into. So that is something, another issue is staffing, and how much staffing does this require? And how much permit revenue can go toward city staffing to manage the program? So all that is, are things that we need to be working on. And we didn't want to start working on it until the ordinance is adopted.
Okay, well, let us know how we can support. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Very much aligned with the goals of the code amendment. Promoting public safety, addressing community needs, aligning with state regulations, and coordinating with neighboring jurisdictions ensures that we successfully incorporate the right standards into our much-needed shared multi-micro mobility program. Aligning with the state standards and adopting a code that is very similar to neighboring jurisdictions promotes the overall safety of our entire transportation system. A nearly universal set of standards encourages more folks to use micro mobility options because they already have an understanding of how the system safely and effectively works. So if you have obviously a micro mobility option in Seattle or Redmond, you're essentially ready to have a safe, fun, and quick experience here in Bellevue. Also appreciate the restrictions on riding on sidewalks and the creation of the dismount zones when deemed appropriate. And I think too, appreciate some of the comments and questions that were raised earlier, but looking at the opening from Seattle of the Two Line, the World Cup, I think, you know, these kinds of mobility solutions are going to be highly sought after. And I think, and obviously you have that in mind when we're looking at a pilot program, and so appreciate the question that Councilmember Nguyenhaus asked, and then your response to of, you know, by spring. So I think that's great. And just wanted to add on, I do think, you know, as the mayor brought up, you know, the more we look at micro mobility, the more we encourage walking, riding, rolling, the more we want to look at dedicated infrastructure and also, you know, alternatively, any other kinds of infrastructure. So we've got a lot of things to do and a little bit of money to do them with, so I understand that, you know, it's pretty competitive. But it just comes into sharper focus, I think, as we deal with things like what we're talking about with the scooters tonight. And then too, as far as the pilot goes, you know, we're going to need enough time to collect good data, enough good data. But I think, you know, we want to move as quickly as reasonable from the pilot to implementation, which is what, you know, I hope our final decision is. So again, really good work, and certainly in favor of moving this forward.
So, thank you so much. So to be clear, we are voting to move forward for final approval, the new codes for the scooters. We're not deciding on a pilot program tonight, I'm just clarifying that for the audience. So can I have a motion, please?
I move to direct staff to finalize the BCCA ordinance for final action as part of the consent agenda at a future meeting.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So City Manager, let's move on to the next one.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. We're about 50% through or midpoint of the update of the sustainable Bellevue Plan update. And so tonight, staff is here to give a little bit of progress on our existing plan, but also update you on the community process of Phase Two of the Plan Update, including introduction of some draft strategies that could be undertaken to help achieve our greenhouse gas emissions reductions goals. So we have Tara Johnson, our Planning Director, Jennifer Ewing, Sustainability Manager, Colin Munson, our Climate and E-Mobility Coordinator, and I will hand it over to, I think probably Tara is leading this off. Tara?
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us tonight. As City Manager Carlson mentioned, we're here this evening to provide council with an update on the progress being made with the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. We're also going to briefly, very briefly touch on some of the highlights of our ongoing actions with the existing plan. So tonight's presentation is for information only. We'll talk about some of the progress made, we'll talk about some of the community engagement, actions that have been ongoing, and then we'll end with some of our draft strategies for discussion with council. So to start off, we'll give you some context setting, we'll provide an overview on our overall schedule for the Plan Update. We'll also talk about what we heard from the community in terms of priorities for sustainability. We'll touch on what we heard from you at our April touchpoint. We had a pretty robust discussion with council at that meeting. And then talk about what we've been doing to achieve our 2030, and what we intend to do to achieve our 2050 goals. And then we'll end with just an overview on our draft strategies and talk about next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Council. So just for some quick kind of recap and context, as a reminder, the current Sustainable Bellevue Plan was adopted at the end of 2020. So we're almost towards the end of that five-year plan, but while we've been working on updating it, we are continuing to implement the current Sustainable Bellevue Plan. The Council Packet includes a summary of some recent accomplishments, so our presentation tonight is going to focus more on our work on the Plan Update. The Plan Update does build on our work over the last five years and supports the implementation of regional and state policies around climate action and updated policies in the comprehensive plan, climate and environment element. The overall framework for the updated plan will be largely the same as the current plan, so the same five focus areas you see on the slide there. And it will also cover strategies and actions for both the overall community and for our municipal operations. Our presentation tonight is going to mostly focus on the community strategies for the plan, but we'll give kind of some quick updates on municipal operations. As a reminder, that here's the timeline for the Plan Update. Since the launch at the end of last year, we've been working on reviewing our progress, updating the goals and targets, and updating the strategies and actions for the plan. Tonight, we'll focus the presentation on what we've heard from our community engagement, and also the high, the high-impact strategies that are needed to achieve our goals. We are continuing to refine the actions for those high-impact strategies for the plan, and we're aiming to release a draft plan for public comment in mid-August with the goal of bringing a recommended draft plan to council in October. This slide shows our updated goals for the plan, including the overarching goal to be carbon neutral by 2050. The goals and outcomes of the plan remain largely the same as the current plan with some, I would say, more minor technical adjustments. So in addition to the greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, the plan will continue to include goals and strategies related to sustainable mobility, tree canopy, zero waste, renewable energy, reducing energy use, and leading by example through municipal operations. This graphic just shows kind of the high-level goals. The full plan will include more detailed strategies and action-level metrics for measuring progress. So this slide provides kind of a high-level recap of our community engagement and what we've heard. The Council Packet goes into a little more detail on all of the engagement we've been doing in the Phase One Engagement Report. And even since that report was finalized, we've done more engagement over the past couple weeks. It's really been an ongoing dialogue with the community and stakeholders. In summary, we've done, or we've held two open houses, our annual Earth Day celebration at the Botanical Garden, we've done a significant amount of engagement with students and their families, we've been able to really broaden our engagement with diverse community members through our partnerships with Eastside For All and the Little Masters Club. We've also done, or held a survey to gauge resident priorities, and through that, we've heard 80% of respondents support bold climate action, and 83% feel that climate change is an important issue to them personally. Climate resilience and preparedness have emerged as high priority from our community engagement in light of recent events such as the bomb cyclone, where our residents are starting to feel climate impacts more locally. Other priorities from engagement include supporting transit access and walkability, and ensuring the benefits of our different programs are available to all residents, including renters and people living in multifamily buildings. Building on the climate resilience community priority, we wanted to highlight that, you know, some of the actions we're looking at will have significant emissions reduction benefits, such as renewable energy or transit expansion. Some actions may not have as much impact on reducing emissions, but are extremely impactful in terms of preparing the community for climate impacts, such as improvements to air filtration or stormwater management. But there is significant overlap between these categories of mitigation and resilience, like, and those, and many of our most critical actions lie at this intersection, such as strategies like encouraging heat pumps, which both reduce household emissions compared to natural gas heaters, and also provide cooling during heat waves. Preserving and increasing keep, preserving and increasing tree canopy is another example of a strategy which both reduces emissions and decreases the urban heat island effect. So as a recap, some of the key themes we heard at the April study session with council was further clarity on whether or not we're on track to meet our 2030 goals, which I'll speak to more shortly. What strategies will have the greatest impact to put us on track to achieve our goals? And what are the most cost-effective strategies for achieving our goals? Before we dive into that, for the community side of the plan, for municipal operations, we do want to highlight that we've already met and exceeded our 2030 goal to reduce emissions by 50%, and we've already reduced our emissions by 57%. So we're on track to meet our 2040 goal, and also demonstrating that in areas where we have full control, we can make significant progress. On the community side, meeting our goals will rely on action both at our local level, but also state and federal. We have reported at our last update earlier this year that we've reduced emissions 8% since our baseline year of 2011, despite 25% population and job growth during that time. Despite this progress, though, we are not on track to meet our short or long-term greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. You asked us in April what it will take to achieve our goals, and we really, really want to focus tonight on the high-impact strategies for achieving those goals, and that is electrifying our buildings and expanding mobility options to reduce vehicle miles traveled. To provide a little more context on that, as part of the Plan Update, we've reevaluated the emissions reductions pathways in the analysis we refer to as the wedge. This version on the slide tonight is a really simplified version, just for illustrative purposes. But the updated analysis has illustrated really two key takeaways. One, like I said, in order to achieve our goals, we're reliant on a mix of state and federal policies and actions, along with, with local actions, so things we can either control or have a strong influence on. And then the second key takeaway is that as we have updated our model and recrunched the numbers based on current progress, both of our local actions, but also state policies, we're finding it's not feasible to achieve a 50% reduction by 2030, but if we scale up our actions, we could achieve that goal by 2035. In response to council's interest in the cost-effectiveness of different actions, our team will be estimating costs for the various strategies and actions, which we will bring back to you with the draft plan this fall. And then building on those high-level estimates, with the next budget process, we will be looking at costs to implement the plan, and also exploring opportunities for new revenue to support that. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Colin, and he's going to talk a little bit more in detail about the high-impact strategies to achieve our goals.
Thank you. Yeah, so the next two slides here, we're just going to go through the slides, excuse me, go through the strategies by those five focus areas that Jennifer introduced at the beginning of the presentation, sort of ordering them as we saw two slides ago into the high-impact section, and then the more foundational ones to sort of help us achieve our long-term goals. So as we, as we mentioned, you know, 90% of our emissions overall in Bellevue come from buildings and transportation, so we're really focused on for that high-impact effort, decarbonizing existing buildings and reducing vehicle miles traveled on the transportation side. So these slides here will visually highlight those, those strategies that are most relevant to, to those. So here, under our buildings, right, we're looking at scaling the energy smart eastside program, looking at policies to decarbonize and electrify buildings across the city, and then incentives as well as technical assistance to do that, sort of again, building on existing work that, that we already do. That's, that's, those are the high-impact ones on the building side. On transportation, what we're looking at doing, you know, I think we've heard a lot about this tonight already in particular, it's reducing VMT, reducing vehicle miles traveled. And to do that, the sort of the, the big barrier that we understand is the funding to, you know, do the dedicated infrastructure that we heard a lot about just now with the micro mobility program from a moment ago, as well as supporting our other transit speeding reliability and access projects. Here, we're going to move into those more foundational ideas, things that may not show up in the emissions analysis, but we know that are very critical, right? As Jennifer mentioned, we heard a very strong desire for, from the community to have an, for us to have an emphasis on climate resilience, and that's what we want to focus on moving forward. This is work that, as we talked about, we do a lot of in the city already, and we really want to expand on and build on as we move forward, when we see events like the bomb cycle in the winter and increase in heat smoke events every summer. Finally, for the ones that we wanted to really pull out and highlight for you all this evening, a strategy around assessing long-term funding options to implement this plan. You can imagine something very much like what we saw early this evening with the Grand Connection Project to, to do this work. Finally, I just want to touch on our strategies in the waste materials and the natural systems. Again, this is a plan that's not just about reducing emissions, this is a sustainability plan, we have goals around zero waste, about achieving our city and park vision, and these are our strategies that help us do that, right? Achieving zero waste here through policies and through continuing our efforts, building on our efforts that we already do. And then our natural systems, supporting our tree canopy, reducing water use, increasing our stormwater infrastructure. Again, things that you might not see in the emissions profile, but that really, really matter to achieve our overarching holistic sustainability goals. In terms of next steps, as we mentioned, we're going to have a draft out for public comment in August. I will be coming back to you all with a draft plan, a recommended plan for review in October, and then expected adoption sometime in November. Tara, if you want to close this out?
So as we said at the onset of the presentation, we're here for information only, and to provide you with progress update. And at this point, we're ready to, for any discussion, staff are available to answer any questions you have. I'll, I'll be the focus, and I'll, I'll transmit the questions onto staff as needed.
Okay, great, thank you. So information only, no decisions tonight. Let's start with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Tara, Jennifer, Colin, Emil King on the, lurking on the backside, and all of the staff across departments for your dedication to this very critical body of work. The progress made in this 2021, 2025, 2025 plan, especially surpassing our municipal emissions reduction reduction goal five years ahead of the schedule is amazing. I also really appreciate your outreach to youth and underrepresented communities, I think that's amazing. I think your inclusive approach ensures that our sustainability strategies reflect everyone who lives in Bellevue, and we hear all of the voices. I have three questions. The first one is, we are in year five of 2021/2025 plan. And I know we measure progress each year, we have two years' lag, for whatever reason that is. That gives us indication of how we are doing towards our main goal. Now, Jennifer, you mentioned it is clear that we, our strategies have not been sufficient enough to meet our 2030 goals. As we go forward to this 2026/2030 plan, are there ways that we can check and adjust more quickly with any leading indicators so we can have opportunities to make funding decisions when we craft our budgets?
Yep, sure, I can speak to that one. Yeah, so I think that that's definitely something we've been looking at, how we can, you know, both continue to track our big-picture outcome metrics, so our climate goals and tree canopy and those sorts of things, but those are, those are also lagging indicators. You know, we find out how we're doing a little bit after the fact. We have to wait for the data to come in and that sort of thing. So as part of the plan update with the strategies and actions, we are looking at adding more strategy-level metrics. So for instance, with Energy Smart Eastside, how many homeowners are we supporting with incentives and outreach, and how much funding are we leveraging from grants or other incentives? So really, things we can track on a more, you know, monthly, quarterly basis, so we can establish goals for those for our various programs, and then track that more regularly. So that would be more of like the leading indicator that supports kind of our overall outcome-level metrics, so we are looking at moving more in that direction.
Do, just in general, do you know how many of those smaller metrics that you have that is going to reach out to our goals? Like you said, how many households we changed their furnace from gas to electric, that's one of those small. How many of those do we have that can help us to not repeat what happened in 2021 to 25? Make us be more metric savvy from 2026 to 2030?
That's a good question. I think we have a draft list of metrics now that we're kind of trying to refine. It's always a challenge of wanting to be really comprehensive but not too overwhelming. That said, as we look at our bigger-picture GHG reduction goal, you know, we do want to look at what impact we're having with our local work and track that, but we are also reliant on, for instance, PSE transitioning to renewable energy, and so they report on that every year or so. So there's certain metrics that we do want to keep tracking, but it might, we may not always be able to get the data as frequently as we might like.
Thank you.
The other, the other piece I'd just add on is, and you'll see this when we bring back the draft plan in the fall for review and adoption, but we're building in more flexibility into the plan, so there are certain components that if, say, we need to make more progress under certain metrics, we have that ability. And so we'll talk through that framework in more detail in the fall.
Great. And everything I'm going to say today and in general is what it is in our control. I'm not talking about PSE, I'm not talking about the state, I'm talking about what city can do in their own power for the community-wide greenhouse emission. So my hope from asking the first question is, hopefully, we build a more transparent, data-driven process where goals are clearly tied to a specific budget, outcomes, and timelines, so we can be able to monitor progress and make course correction earlier, and it seems Tara mentioned that there is some flexibility. My second question is, the draft doesn't provide much detail about how the investment requires for 2026/2030 strategies stack up against other city priorities. It is also unclear where we might have a strong leverage for external funding or public private partnerships. Can you speak a little bit to the financial modeling you are working on for the emission-reduction packages expected later this year? And my main question is, is this council able to compare return on investment, public health benefits, affordability, and the risk of doing too little for each investment scenario?
So I can start off and then hand things over to Jennifer. So at our April touchpoint, we talked a little bit about some of the financial analysis, and I think a couple council members expressed an interest in understanding, what are the high-impact actions, what is the associated cost? And so that is certainly something that we're continuing to work on. We have consultants on board that are assisting and supporting that work. And so that will be something that we continue to undertake and then bring back, bring back to council. In terms of weighing various priorities, I mean, that's going to be a big component, and so part of this, the timing of this plan is really going to inform, the intent is to have this plan adopted before the end of the year. That feeds into the 2026 timeframe, at which point council is going to start having conversations about our 27, 28 budget. And so at that point, there'll certainly be opportunities, so some of these strategies will tie into what are some of the council priorities and how are you weighing various, various priorities, whether it be the affordable housing strategy, so we have various functional plans that are coming forward to council, the economic development plan update, so all of those various implementation plans are moving forward. And so this will be an opportunity to tie into the next budget conversation.
That's great, thank you so much. My last question is, there are several strategies aimed at improving resilience, but it's not clear to me how we will track progress, especially for the communities that they are most at risk. How do we, how do we plan to measure Bellevue's climate resilience over time, and how we will ensure those metrics reflect the outcomes for vulnerable and those frontline populations?
Yeah, I can take that one. Yeah, that's a great question, and definitely something we've been grappling with with the plan update. Our climate vulnerability assessment is a good start to look, you know, for certain metrics we can use to gauge our resilience. But we've been working with our consultant and really looking at, you know, some of best-practice plans from around the country, and I think it's an area where Bellevue might be kind of leading by example, kind of starting to establish some metrics for resiliency. It is, compared to some of the other topics where we do have pretty good metrics that are, I would say, pretty established best practices, it's, we're sort of surprisingly finding that there isn't necessarily a good consistent set of metrics that cities use to measure resilience. So that's definitely something we've identified as, you know, part of the plan implementation, we need to, we can do some more work there. We have identified some good metrics, we're still kind of making sure we can gather the baseline data we need and that they are truly measurable. So yeah, I think that's it. That is one area where we have, I think, a little more work to do to figure out the best reporting approach. And we're also thinking that's a nice opportunity to really work with the community to understand how do they think about resilience, how, you know, here's some of our ideas, but if we're talking about resilience of vulnerable community members, you know, that seems like a nice opportunity to collaborate on how we might measure that.
Thank you. Looking forward to the next step, I am really hopeful that we can be best example of the city who is doing its best to reduce all of emission, again, whatever it is in the city's control. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, appreciate the chance to have this check-in on our update of the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. And first of all, I appreciate the serious, how seriously we've addressed our own operations and taken actions necessary to already exceed our 2030 municipal operations goals. And as has already been mentioned, there's many of the factors that impact our ability to meet our goals are not within our control, and thankfully, we are laser-focused on the factors we do control. I also really appreciate all the community engagement that's taken place. I know that you've provided community members and stakeholders with a lot of opportunities to share their ideas and priorities, and very encouraged by the staff workshops that were held and the participation. And appreciate the candor and transparency in the agenda memo and the presentation tonight regarding our 2030 climate goals. I know I have felt a little bit frustrated in the past, and I just appreciate that being addressed, so thank you. And when we have clear, we have a cleared, shared understanding of where we're at, we can take concrete steps to get to where we want to be, given our available resources. I think the draft strategies make a lot of sense. I'm sure we're all anxious to see them incorporated into the draft plan, which obviously is coming out before too long. Looking forward to our next update in October and getting a look at the different packages of strategies and investment levels that we can use to achieve our goals. Again, great work, appreciate all the efforts, the added clarity, and all of the engagement that is taking place and will take place leading up to our plan adoption in November. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bargava.
Okay, thank you. Also, plus one to some of the comments that have already been made, to see the great progress on the controllable, city-controllable outcomes ahead of target, which is great. Some of the comments sort of are building on what the Deputy Mayor said. It's really about identifying what are sort of controllable versus non-controllable inputs, and getting closer to the controllable inputs is the way I see it. If we're behind plan, I would still, you know, encourage us to think about, and you've heard me say this even at Planning Commission, I think, previously, identify those inputs, and then finding the ones that are controllable, identify the ones that we need to influence other organizations and agencies and leveraging, you know, the council and others within the larger ecosystem to drive influence, but be focused on the ones that are really controllable, and take aggressive targets to that. Talking about controllable, you talked about the split between vehicles and buildings being the lion's share of this, and the decarbonization of buildings is a single, you know, single largest lever that, you know, so are there specific incentives, measures, targets for that that we can put in place that would be helpful, that would help us maybe accelerate the progress there? Are there specific tactics that you think should be on the table there?
Colin. Yep. Okay, I'll go first. Yeah, for sure, we, you know, we kept that sort of high level for the discussion tonight, so we already have a few programs in place to support that. So first, you know, the state building code, also for new construction, is increasing the energy efficiency with every code cycle. And then for existing buildings, we have kind of two different pathways. One for residential, single-family homes, we have the Energy Smart Eastside program, which is providing outreach and education and incentives for low and moderate-income households to install energy-efficient heat pumps. And then for commercial and large multifamily buildings, we have our clean buildings incentive program. So we do want to look at how can we, you know, increase the impact of those programs, but then also look at other strategies to decarbonize facilities in Bellevue.
Okay. I think, I'm not going to label this, but I think the really interesting part of what we could do is, is to really closely track and monitor the controllable inputs that we know have the largest impact, and then, you know, try and find ways to accelerate things that are working. And the last question I have for you is, looking back in the last five years, what would be some of the learnings that actually tell us what we could have done? Maybe this is a question you don't have to answer now, I don't want to put you on the spot at all, but like, what we could have done differently, whether we would have kept pace without expectations or pivots earlier? This is, maybe I can take it as a follow-up even.
Yeah, that's something we can, we can.
If better addressed, a follow-up, let's just do it that way. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sumida Dwearia.
I echo with my fellow council members about, you know, this great presentation, and also I like it a lot that you pointed out the high, achieving the community climate goals, the high-impact strategies, and then the fundamental strategies. With regard to the existing buildings versus building new building, like, is there, like, you can provide me later, is, can you provide me some data about side-by-side? What is the benefit incentive? How are we attracting and incentivize future developers, per se, like, you know, versus a current building? Like, I think, I think if I can see the item, like, how can we incentivize differently? That would be helping to see what, which elements is controllable, like solar panel, like, you know, items like that? That's just a comment, because I think that that connects with some of the funding opportunities on there with EPA and other opportunities where the sustainable funding part. But also, I think that it connects with a lacking of green jobs that's available, the workforce that's actually capable of doing green jobs. I think from what this, I think, relate to, if there is more opportunities out there for individuals capable of installing a heat pump, a solar panel, that could be like expedite the process of us able to support that for more families that need. One question I have about the frontline communities, do we, how do we prioritize the frontline community about the community climate resilience?
So I can start off, and then Jennifer can add on. Jennifer spoke to, I think, there was another question about resilience and what we're doing there. When we, actually, this was a couple years ago, we undertook an exercise called a climate vulnerability assessment, so that really mapped out, and that went into a lot of detail that mapped out kind of our high-risk communities. And that includes a number of recommendations that really informed some of our comprehensive plan policies, it's also informing a lot of the strategies relating to resilience in the plan.
Okay, so let me rephrase, sorry. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think just to build on that, so the vulnerability assessment was kind of a, a good sort of foundation for this work, but I think as we continue to move forward, you know, there's more work to do to really understand where there might be some gaps or how we could better support frontline communities in increasing their resilience. So we're really interested in this idea of resilience hubs, so where people can go when there is a power outage or, you know, high heat, that sort of thing. Our community centers certainly serve that role, but are there other community facilities that maybe could serve that role? And are there ways we can help connect them to grants for battery backup or things like that? So I think we want to, we have more work to do to really understand the landscape of partners and their facilities and their services, and where there could be some opportunities for, for supporting frontline communities further than what is already being done. I think there's, you know, a good foundation there, but we think there's opportunities for more.
This could be a policy, there's a park levy increase, have a part of element that support open space, community resilience? Do you know?
We'd maybe have to look back at that. I think there might be aspects of the park levy that do support community resilience, it may not be exactly framed in that way, so I think we would probably want to double-check with the.
We can, we can, we can get back with you, we can check with our parks colleagues and get back with you.
Because I think there's a healthy community grant that they can give out, and the cities are eligible to apply for that, too. Okay, that's it for me.
You have to see if you can use those funds for that. Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, thanks for the detailed presentation. I'm quite impressed that you have made very significant progress and accomplishment in this climate change sustainability issue. You know, if I recall correctly, we always seem to be playing catch-up in the past. People always come to us, you know, who are interested, support climate change, wow, we need more. Uh, people always come to us, you know, who are interested, support climate change as well, we need more, we need to accomplish more. We are not meeting the goal that we have set for twenty thirty. We seem to be way behind in almost everything. As a result, I think the city responded and you guys have responded very well. We increase, we increase our uh, personnel to handle this. I think we increase our resources. Uh, so based on your report, it sounds like we probably not just have caught up, but we seems to be on a very good uh, track, right? Uh, especially with whether the city can do, uh, the emission, you know, whatever. The speaker at the beginning of the communicate, public communication, they mentioned that out of the five things that we're looking at, uh, a few of them are, are the responsibility of other agencies. You know, which uh, hopefully that will happen. But we are responsible for a couple of them, you know, which I think you have probably uh, addressing. And they seem to be uh, either catching up or caught up or we're going to meet the goal. So can you tell me more about what progress, what things we're doing? How, what kind of challenges we still be facing? Uh, is, are there other things that we can be doing to meet the goals that we maybe ask to establish and to meet and to work on?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, great question. So I think, you know, looking at our our focus areas around residential buildings, commercial buildings and then, you know, supporting uh, you know, pedestrian and bike infrastructure and and transit access. I think, you know, maybe starting with the mobility solutions, I think we're already doing a lot. But, you know, like our transportation director said, that, you know, there's more to do to build out our ped bike network, to improve connectivity to transit, to make space for more mobility options. So I think, you know, continuing a lot of that work, a lot of this work is um, ongoing uh, and and incremental. Um, from the building standpoint, um, we've made great progress uh, with our clean buildings incentive program. So helping large commercial buildings comply with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act. We've benchmarked uh, about two hundred buildings. So that's the first step in the process, helping those buildings understand their energy use and where there's opportunities to save energy. Um, but then that's another area where a lot of the buildings in Bellevue are are meeting their targets. Um, so they don't actually have to do much right now to reduce emissions. But longer term, in order to achieve our goals, um, they would need to reduce emissions more. So this is a good first step, um, but also recognize that more would would need to be done. Um, either through the State Clean Buildings Act as those um, rules and requirements evolve over time or it could potentially be something locally. So I think more work on the commercial building side and then on the um, residential side. Uh, you know, we've stood up the Energy Smart Eastside program and been really successful at bringing, leveraging our city investments and investments from the other cities to bring in um, grant funds. So really um, leveraging our investments, sort of one city dollar to four grant dollars. Um, but still more to do there just to, um, we're really trying to move the market around heat pumps. But then also there's more opportunities with homes in Bellevue to weatherize them, to make them more energy efficient and that sort of thing. So really looking at um, what are different strategies and how can the city really help homeowners take advantage of different incentives that are out there? Um, or or what incentives might they need to really um, make these kinds of investments in their homes?
I'm asking these questions because I think it's very important to me that the city, that we have a plan. And then we have to budget for the the plan, like increasing people having heat pumps or doing solar panel or doing other things. So that if we don't have a plan, you don't have to budget for it, we're going to fall behind again, right? It's, so while we need to do more, but it just doesn't happen by itself. You know, we got to figure out how and then maybe other things we can do, maybe the other, I don't know. So I don't know what we don't, I don't know, I don't, we don't know what we don't know unless we have a plan. So I would like to see what are the real data that can make a real difference? That can help us to reach our next target, in whatever time it is. This time, rather than playing catch up, I would like to see that we actually have budget to do those things. So don't people have to say, gee, we are falling behind, then we're going to play catch up. We have to say, well, we already there, we're preparing, the plan says, and if we do whatever we want to do, if we have the money to do it, we'll be moving forward. Are you preparing such a plan and such a budget for us?
Um, yes, so when we bring forward the draft plan in the fall, um, I think we've heard a lot of feedback this evening and even previously from council with an, um, expressing an interest in understanding what are some of the high impact actions and then the associated cost. And so our consultants are assisting us with that work right now. And so when we come back in the fall, we'll be providing council with that information. Um, and then the next step, of course, once the plan gets adopted is for council to be weighing these various priorities. So um, how you intend to advance certain budget priorities um, as part of the next twenty seven, twenty eight budget discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Newen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, great conversations and a lot of great comments tonight. Especially appreciate kicking us off here. Uh, Deputy Mayor's comments, I have a lot of the same concerns and and feedback and I won't belabor that. Uh, just one question because I want to get out of here by ten too. Um, what are you hoping to achieve with the um, the the public outreach beginning in August? And the reason I ask that, unless there's additional data that you haven't shared with us tonight, but you have provided a lot of great strategies and tactics. However, without the public really understanding, as we don't right now, in terms of what the timeline is, what the cost is, what the impact is, um, what the ROI is for the city, how is the public going to be able to really provide um, feedback? Useful feedback that you're going to be able to inform the final draft when you come back before us? Otherwise, it looks like, you know, a lot of great tactics, it all looks great, but how is that really going to in in inform us in terms of 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 or for you, inform you to bring back to us?
Jennifer, do you want to take that? Yeah, um, yeah, sure. That that's a great question. So the the draft plan will have more specifics on the actions and timeline and and more details around them. Um, we're working through, you know, with the cost estimates. So I think we are looking at getting kind of broader feedback from the public on the actions. We've already done a significant amount of engagement on together priorities from the community and that sort of thing. So I think as we, you know, continue to move forward and bring the draft plan to council with this sort of high level cost estimates, I think there will continue to be opportunities for the public to weigh in more on on priorities.
Even after the August opportunity, is there another opportunity for the public to weigh in or is that the one and only opportunity?
I think that will be the opportunity for the plan. So the plan will really reflect the sort of package of actions that are needed to achieve our goals. But then the next question is, if we're resource constrained and can't do them all, how might we prioritize those? So the plan's really going to try to capture what is needed.
Yeah, well, see, I think they need some of that information and data to really understand how we're going to prioritize. So I I I look forward to us getting that feedback and then you coming back with that, with that prioritization, I think will be really important. But really appreciate the update. I know how much work uh, that goes into it and uh, all my colleagues said it best. Thank you so much. It, you really reflected, this is a priority for 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 this city and really look forward to uh, you coming back with a with a plan that hopefully we can adopt later this year. So thank you so much.
Okay, I'll be quick. I uh, echo what Deputy Mayor said about targets and budget. Really appreciate his comments. Um, I'm really excited that we had such a significant decrease in trips per capita, car trips per capita. And um, I think, you know, that's something worth looking into why that happened and how we can increase that even further. That's a, that's a huge positive. Um, and then if you could answer me in an email, you talked about wanting to get to zero waste. Really curious what your plans are for that. So I think that's too big of a topic for the last three minutes here, but if I would love a, maybe a mass email so we could all hear more about that. Okay, so I just have something to say. We're not going to have a meeting next week because it's the fifth Tuesday of the month. We typically do not have a meeting and our following meeting after that is actually going to be on a Monday because uh, election night is Tuesday. So our next meeting will be on August fourth. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.